Camo will be late and I have not heard from Jamie.
Why don't we have a quorum, sir?
Good morning, everybody. The undersheriff has agreed to lead us in a pledge this morning. So we will please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
He agreed to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kramer is absent. Commissioner O'Rourke.
Present.
Commissioner Rexro.
Present.
Chairman Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Ross is absent and will arrive late. Commissioner Eldar.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner. Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. And now we need to take a look at the agenda. And feel free to talk with us on this, Sean, if we're missing something on this. But any suggestions for the agenda, late additions, deletions, or anything?
It's a work session. I move to, yeah, just like it is. No amendments. Just approve the agenda as presented. Yeah, that's it.
Second.
All those in support of that motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion approved five zero.
It's a work session. We can go all over it, okay?
And speaking of that, since it's a work session, let's treat it very informally.
Yes.
And we'll talk when we have an opportunity. Well, not a full opportunity.
Right.
Any public comment this morning? Thank you. Any commissioner comment?
Just glad to be here.
Well, we're now down to our action items. And Sean, thank you for pulling this together.
So I handed out a lot of material. Just take that to the side. I think the first thing, the primary purpose today was to discuss broadband, I think, holistically, and what's in play, what is not in play, but it's been discussed. So to do that, I think we have guests. And Patricia, maybe you can lead us.
Yep, she's here. Good to have Patricia back.
Maybe I have it of this, I see. Well, thank you, everyone. And I want to thank you also for the support you gave to the Health Department's Rejockey Program. I gave them an adequate amount of time here, so thank you very much. And I want to thank you for all the work you're doing. Having been on that side, I know the number of meetings that are involved and a bunch of the amount of work that you're all doing. And I just thank you so much for the careful attention you do. It's a job. I'm going to just give a couple of quick comments to kind of set the stage for new commissioners, of which two are here, and really talk about how we got to the four townships. And you're all familiar, the Cleveland, Mississauga, and the foundations, the committee has been working on broadband for a long time. And the best thing that I think the committee did was to recommend that the board of commissioners engage Chris Shearer, because that became a game changer. And Chris, having driven the community strengths of our county, was able to assess precisely who had broadband, who did not, what type, what speed. And that laid for us the platform to begin newly develop a broadband plan. Commissioner Wessel was part of it from the beginning. But when we decided to do the plan, Commissioner Lautner jumped in and was extremely helpful because she brought Cherland and Luthr with her, which became a part of it. So how did we leave out four townships? The reason being is Michigan Connect, or Connect Michigan, was very instrumental in working with us and providing getting of internet service providers who had the capacity and financial backing to take on a project like this. And they were pushing fiber, which was not really what we'd been looking at as part of the plan at that point, but it became a reality. And then based on Chris's data, we knew exactly where we needed and what we needed, and how we could fill in other modalities until fiber reached everyone. At the time, Charter was working in four townships. Cleveland, Centerville, excuse me, Cleveland, Empire, Cassin, and Glen Arbor. And they were working on something called the World Development Opportunity Fund Purchase that they had secured. Unfortunately, the maps that they were, they made their bid on were not accurate in terms of the underserved or unserved parcels' addresses in that area. So they were really looking at a reduced number of counties to provide service than really was the need based on Chris's work. But Point was not inclined to intrude on Charter's word at the time because Charter had so much going on in those four townships. So what occurred is we entered into a contract, or you entered into a contract, with Point to serve seven of the eleven townships, with the idea and always the movement that the final four would be included as quickly as we could. And it was the intent to do that. So it wasn't that we were just going to serve seven and leave four out. So what Chris and I have been doing over the past three months is looking with Charter to try and see how they could become a partner with the county and pick up all of the existing unserved and underserved addresses that were in those four townships. So that's where we are today. Chris is going to take you through pretty extensive explanation of what is the reality in those counties and what we can and can't do based on the information he has. Chris? Turning it over to you, my friend.
No.
You're a little low. So the counter, the counter application maybe is when we turn this TV up, there's going to be a loud whistling for bull and dinner.
Okay, so let us know if that happens.
You turned it up, though?
I just, I just turned it up. I just, so.
How loud are you speaking, Chris?
Can you guys hear me any better that way?
Yep.
We'll try that.
Yes.
Chris, can you increase volume on your side? Look, you might get anything.
I, my microphone is set up. Let's see if I can kick up the gain a little bit on it, but.
That's fine as long as it stays close.
You're good there.
That should be good.
That's good.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, good. Um, yeah, Patricia, you kind of summed it up very well, where we were at. I, and she didn't make a point that I'm going to kind of talk about here, that when Charter was developing the R-DOT, they focused on the areas that they thought were, you know, within their business model and they could work with. I, and then on top of the fact that the way the SCC had outlined things, it left a lot of gaps in these areas unserved throughout the four townships. The, we had an opportunity with the recent Robin Grant that many of you are familiar with, where Charter had agreed to pursue funding through that mechanism to finish filling in the gaps. What we learned afterwards is that they still kind of selected the areas that they were pursuing. They were not successful with it, but it kind of has set a baseline for where we're at today. And that's why I wanted to make sure that today you understand what that is. When we went back home, I, we asked for a cost to finish the four townships entirely. And I want Patricia to talk about the actual numbers, but they came back with a fairly high number, which we didn't find valuable. I, I mean, did believe that it would require that. So we've been working on different ways to get it done. And since that time, what we did find out is what they did apply for with Robin Grants and what they were going to be looking for from us on that, which seemed to be a lot more reasonable. So with that, I'm going to share this screen. Is everybody able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'll move slowly because I know when I zoom in and out, it takes a while to catch up on that. I, but what we're looking at right now are the four townships, plus part of the eastern townships. I, we've got Glen Arbor, Cleveland, Cassin, and Empire Townships. The blue areas that you see are the current service areas where Charter does have service. I, a lot of this has been built from the last couple of years through the R-DOT program. I, a lot of this was existing from when we first did the state. The larger areas, the larger parcels you see, especially along M-72 and the southern half of Cassin and Empire Townships, that's what launched the build, has occurred in the last two years. So there's been a lot of progress in the townships. I, the areas that we're still concerned with are the orange hatched areas. These orange hatched areas, so, you know, cover large areas like up here in the Cleveland Township. I, all of these are still unserved. They don't have access to a reliable wired high-speed connection. And today, these four townships, our only option for that kind of high-speed connection is through Charter. We do have some other activity, which I'll briefly touch on, that's occurred in the last year. I, but we need to focus on that. And what I want to point out is that when Charter went for the Robin Grant, they only pursued these areas that you see, the orange polygons drawn around. Patricia, can you see those? I know you know what I'm showing.
Not very well, Chris. Can you zoom in a little bit more?
All right, well.
Where I can outline it.
Let me zoom in to where's Cleveland Township.
So what Chris is talking about are areas that you see outlined in this, this orange color. You'll see a little bit over here, and then as he comes down, we'll see more. Can you see that?
So you're talking about the yellow, because there's an orangier.
It's the orange outline around the yellow.
Okay.
Oh, okay. That's what is the yellow.
All right.
Yeah, just, they drew a poly, you know, they had a, you know, one of the engineers had taken their kid to work today, and they let their second grader draw the lines around these areas, which is why they're kind of squished the way they are. But those are, you can see the orange hatch underneath those, which indicates those areas are definitely unserved, those areas need funding, those areas were part of the Robin Grant. But Patricia, if you could point out, show that there's some areas still in Cleveland Township that are not outlined, that are in that orange hatch, that orange color. Those are the ones that they, they chose not to do for one reason or another. I, and we weren't aware of it until we found out Laura Bublant had actually applied for them, which in the last several weeks, Charter's been very good working with them and opening up and telling us all of this information, which has really helped us finalize this plan. Now, one thing I do want to point out is over on the right-hand side, just east of Line Lake, you see there's a small area that's outlined with that orange line. That hatch is a little bit different.
No, up, I think.
Because that hatch is actually part of Point Broadband's plan for their bill.
Stop that there.
And included that hatch in the unserved areas from Solon Township, actually from Centerville Township in that case. I, so those are covered. And we've taken all that into account. But the point is, is that as you look around this map, you can see that there are orange hatched areas that still do not fall within the funded area.
Chris, Chris, they're showing up as yellow.
I do not see an orange hatched area.
There's not orange, it's yellow. What we're seeing on this side, yellow with the darker yellowish-orange line, your color burns.
Which most of us can't see.
Yeah, which most of us can't see.
So if it's yellow area, I understand what he's talking about, but I have no idea what orange hatched is from what I'm seeing.
Yeah, but there is no orange hatch. It's, he's talking about the yellow. It's on his, on his vision, it looks orange.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a smaller screen that you guys can look at, and the colors do change. I apologize for that. I, but in that, in that same vein, I also want to show you the, the kind of upside of the R-DOT program and another element in the Robin Program that is in fact what we're talking about. I just moved down into Cassin Township. And Patricia, if you could point out the polygons there, the hammer especially.
I'll have to find it first myself here. Oh, yeah. Okay. Here's, this is the hammer.
Yep. These are areas that were also included in the Robin Grant when they applied for earlier this year, because they were still assuming those were unserved. But Charter themselves, I, did not realize or, I understand how they've got multiple systems, multiple parts of their organization that are doing different things. But during the R-DOT bill, when they did the design, they didn't stay within the boundaries of R-DOT. They went beyond that. So what they ended up doing was these areas down here were actually built during the R-DOT construction. And those residents now have access to Charter because of that.
So the, the blue, the blue is all Charter and that's all done?
That is done or being done.
Being done by Charter, okay. Okay.
Most of that is done. And they are activating it back. Let us know they were activating some of the remaining areas in that area this week. So this map does show residents that can access Charter's service, will be able to access it this year, you know, not really in the next week or so. And some of them already have. And I don't know exactly where those lines are. You will notice, though, up near West Valley Road, there's still a patch of orange unserved area that they did not build as part of it. Um, so the reason I'm pointing this out is we know what they were going to ask the county for as far as a contribution to, to build this out. And it was, what, 1.2 million dollars? And what we've done over the last couple of weeks, we went out and we validated it ourselves and kind of helped Charter catch up a little bit, and showed them all the areas that they had already completed, that no longer needed the funding. So the discussion has turned to all of these areas that are in the orange hatch, that are not within what was going to be funded. And we're now looking at, I, maybe diverting some of that funding, I, to be able to pick up everything throughout all four townships as we have been trying to get them all along. And that's what I've been in the process of doing for the last couple of days, is quantifying that. The Charter, our Robin Grant application had 288 addresses in these four townships. With everything that we have discovered as far as what they've already built through R-DOT, and also including some stuff that Point Broadband has done, you'll notice there's a brown area there. I, that indicates that Point Broadband actually has active service in that neighborhood right now. But that count within those four orange polygons that we've been talking about is down to 182 addresses. I, so we've added, I, 106 addresses to the service areas within those four townships just through organic construction of the R-DOT program.
Chris, let me, let me stop for just one second. The, these orangey, as, as, Chris is calling the orange lines around the yellow areas, that was the Robin project that Charter submitted for funding to my housing state. You should see that was accepting contracts for a lot of, and so you will see that the yellow, or the orange, the yellow hatched area outside of that, those were never included in the Robin project because of the very reason Chris said. Either they didn't feel that it fit within their community policy to serve, or they were, and/or they were working off incorrect maps that were available at the time to everyone. That's changed. Now, kind of map that Chris does, not quite as, as fine too, but a much improved map as we think it is through the state now. So, so when you, when he's talking about Robin, he's talking about the, those areas that you see the lines around, which is why this becomes significant on a hammer, because most of that has been filled in. So we're looking at maybe 30% of what was there is now done in terms of the Robin project.
So can that 30% be shifted then to?
That's what we're asking. Can we pick up? And I'm going to turn it back to Chris to explain some of the reason why some of the buildings are more expensive and why others get cost a little bit more when it's dense packed addresses. So, but I wanted to be sure you were kind of following that. Okay, Chris, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No problem. I, at one point, a couple of months ago, we did present Charter, before we had this information about Robin, in fact, we presented our list, our complete list for the entire county. And they came back as, they said we built that 3.8 million dollars to fill the entire county. That's a lot of what they were, I, leave it out of the Robin Program, was high cost. And it was much more costly to get to for a couple of reasons. One, I, they were looking at extending their older coax technology in a lot of these areas rather than trying to build new fiber over to them. I, because in the small quantities that they were looking at, like up here around Glen Lake and Vertick Millie, you can see there's some orange areas, they were looking at just simply expanding their own coax network, which is actually more expensive to do. I, but to run fiber all the way through Maple City over there and set up a separate node for just those few homes was even more money than that. So that was driving the cost way up. And we knew that what they were going to ask for for all the areas within the orange polygons was 1.2 million dollars, but to do everything was 3.8. There had to be somewhere between we could get. And so that's one reason we went out, we looked at what they did already have in fact done. We know that's about 30% of what they were planning on. So we should be able to push that over. And what's it going to take to get to the rest of these higher cost areas? I, and it's also going to require us rethinking a couple of those areas because they're really at high cost. And most of that is going to be over here slipping through the news. I, basically the US Park System. Now, up here, I, Point Onida, Port Onida, I, I'm going to jump up there for just a quick second. Charter still has work to do up there, all of this blue hatched area. They're still obligated to build because of R-DOT, and they will. And there are some homes up in there that are being fixed up as part of that, but we, today, I'm going to zoom in and so you can see arson.
There's some ashes.
There's about three houses.
Homes in there that are private residences that will be picked up when Charter builds their R-DOT system up there. We're still identifying them as unserved because they're technically not included in that program, just the areas around it, which is one of the oddities about the R-DOT program. But we also still have areas like over here in Glading. I, this is all federal land except for there's five homes here on the way up to the Maritime Museum that are private residences. We don't have anything going to them. There is a request from the park system to get fiber up into Glade Haven because they're renovating, you know, boarding house and the hotel, which we'll know about next year. And then there's some other residences within the park system that are, like I said, they are private residences, but they don't have access to anything. And so those are really driving the cost way up. So one of the things I think we need to do is to sit down with the folks in the park system and maybe come up with a separate plan for them. Possibly wait until next year when the funding comes out. We should be able to leverage the fact that they are a federal organization and be able to use that to get the funding that's going to be required to get all of those areas done. Or possibly they may have another mechanism in place that we don't know about that we can help them with. I, and just as a side, there was R-DOT funding awarded to some of the park area, but it was to Starlink, the satellite company, which was shortly after it was awarded, it was taken back away because it just didn't make a lot of sense. There was a lot of problems with that work. So we know that the area that, you know, it is on a federal radar, but I'm suggesting that we take all of these addresses that are within the park system that are creating those extra high costs, take those out, and then just work with Charter on getting everything else done outside of the park system throughout these three townships. And a little bit, there's a few over here in Glade Haven Township, or Glen Arbor Township, like this road runs along the north side of Fisher Lake here. We want to get those included in there, some stuff around that area. Possibly, you know, actually get them to build fiber to it, but we need to find out what those costs are going to be and bring that to the table.
Chris, Chris.
Said and done, I believe.
Chris, I was just going to say, this gray, in case you're not picking up, that's, that's land that's either state land, federal land, or it's state, there's no housing on it. So we're seeing a lot of gray in there, wondering what that is, how that is.
So, so for sure?
It could also be farmland or orchards that.
It's very sparse, yeah. Very sparse. Very, very sparse. It's a waste.
Okay. So like east, east of the Hammer between Cassin, between Cassin and Solon, there's some gray areas. Is that all orchard? No houses in there at all? Like not even a single house? Quite a bit.
Can you hear the question, Chris? Commissioner Lautner's asking, east of the Hammer, there's a lot of gray unoccupied land shown or orchards. Is that all orchards? Are there any houses that are in there that you can't remember?
No, there are no, none of these parcels have occupied structure on it.
Okay.
They're either forest, woods, or farmland or orchard. I, we do have, we do have some blue hatch down here. I, that's not, that's not, I don't see what that road is, but this blue hatch is also still unbilled, R-DOT area that Charter has to fill.
We can't see your icon. We can't see your icon.
I was going to say, what are you pointing, Chris?
It's, it's.
Wait. Oh, there was something. That's what would be helpful.
It's along East Cassin Road.
That lighter blue area.
They, they built up South Maple City Road as kind of a names run for their R-DOT. They built up from there. They just haven't gone all the way east to the township already yet. yet. And you can see there's even a little bit in the Solon Township, and RDO is still on the board to, or Charter's still on the board to build with the RDO funding.
Chris, can you back out a little bit and overlay the transparent, transparent image of the RDO area for Charter so they can see where it is?
Yeah. Sorry, that's probably making people dizzy.
That's okay.
Um, that's quickly, that option, that, there we go.
See the light blue that he's overlaying? That's the rural help opportunity fund that Charter is working on. That's their, their area they're just to work on for townships.
So not the medium, but the light?
The light. What you can see underneath it is what's been built or is being built in the dark.
Yes.
So it gives you a sense.
Yeah, that's a transparent layer so you can see what's underneath it. But also notice that the way that the RDO was awarded, it was done by census block rather than by individual parcel or address. And so you see a lot of gray parcels underneath it. And you also see parcels that are kind of cut in half by the boundaries that the census block used. So there are actually parcels that show up kind of touching the RDO area that are actually in RDO because the occupied well is on the opposite side of the road running. And even though that crosses the property, it doesn't necessarily mean that it was included in the RDO program.
And you can see.
A lot of that's something from interpretation by the ISP.
But my point, Chris was talking about, it was RDO that Charter had to do, you can see when you turn on that transparent, you can see where it is.
Yes. Yeah, near School Lake, you can see the blue hatch underneath the light blue shading. Now, that, that shows that they still have that to build. That also shows another point which we have talked to Charter about since we know that building up Maple City Road here resulted in getting service another half a mile east of Maple City Road in an area that they weren't supposed to have to build. We know to get up there to School Lake, they're going to have to build through this orange hatched area, and they're going to naturally be picking up people anyway. So.
A Bohemian or six sixty-nine?
Six sixty-seven.
Yeah, Bohemian Road is in that section there.
And the people on School Lake are waiting with bated breath.
Go ahead.
I said the people on School Lake are baiting, waiting with bated breath.
You have to.
Which is why I made sure that I drove down that road three times when.
Thanks. Thank you.
What Chris did to make sure that we were factual and, because we got to a steady point a little bit with Charter because our numbers just weren't matching. And we had faith in Chris's number, so a lot had changed. So he came up two wheels to the road, managed to hit nice two weekends of, we're so low, and drove home that area here and validated exactly what had been done and what had not been done. So that's why, what we know, what we're looking at is bad, I guess.
So, I mean, at some point, the detail is certainly informative, but at some point this boils down to X dollars to serve the remaining unserved areas of the four townships. It sounds like you're proposing that that would be less the park service areas, right? And that would be, so do we have, can we quantify that thing? Because that's really what we have to deal with.
Yes, yes. It's important to understand for two reasons. One.
This is personal.
One, if you understand how, seeing the map and seeing what's been done, and having an understanding of how fiber gets moved from location to location strong. And you can see where, if you're, if you're a Charter design technician, engineer, sitting who doesn't have this, who's looking at Google Maps and doesn't have access to something like this, that they are trying to include as a rating of the addresses they hit, and we're going to look at a very different price. So this was really very, very crucial to our next step. And to answer your question, we're hoping that the one point two, when it became clear that three point eight million was just not going to sell to us, we started backing off and just looking at, okay, how can we do this? We said to Robin, you can pick up almost fifty percent of the cost, because the full cost is two point four million. We picked up fifty percent of the cost and, you know, in this area, you have two hundred and eighty-eight homes. So, you know, they actually said, well, why don't we just look at doing that? And we said, huh, why don't we look at two proposals? Let's look at doing that, and let's look at what would cost to do all of the other homes that are not served, that are outside of those orange colors. And then Chris said, wait, things have changed. Let's go up and redraw this area and figure out what we really do have. And so this map reflects that. And our conversations with Charter on Friday last week, and again yesterday morning, have been on, okay, let's say that we're going to take the one point two that you did for Robin, but we both know now that it's about thirty percent less unserved or underserved homes that are in that area. So can we take those monies and pick up as many as we can of the other homes that are not within those polygon areas? Now, they're not going to do them all. They will do some. And we're not, and so that's where Chris is saying, okay, let's see what is logic for us to take out, but you have a commitment to taxpayers to say that, yeah, they'll all get fiber because you can't just get it sent to all of them. So what Chris is feeling is, is if we look at two million, then we've got one point two we know is going to handle most of the density and some of the outline. And that's where we are right now, we're talking with them. As Chris said, Charter's being really good about communicating with us. But beyond that, to reach the rest of the outer areas that are not up in the park area, it's going to be a little more expensive because the distance involved, or whether they have to expand, extend their current coax or cable system.
So the, so the one point two doesn't even serve all of the unserved areas outside of the park?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. You're safe to look at two. Do we think it's going to come in at two? No. No. We think it's going to come in a little under two. And you do have some forms of funding that might be a bit loose. But I think you need a budget for what the cost would be and then be happy if it comes in under that. And we're feeling pretty good about it because it's half before we started with Charter about six months ago when we first were looking at it.
What is, what is consumers charging for a pole attachment? Do you know?
I don't know. Do you, Chris, do you know consumers rate for pole attachments from Charter?
The annual attachment fee, not necessarily, I know the permitting fee is a hundred and thirty-five dollar per pole now. They doubled it a year and a half ago when they heard all this federal funding was coming because they didn't want to get into the fiber business because they would capitalize on it that way. So I'm assuming that their actual annual effect fees have probably also gone up. And I have heard, you know, in the range of a hundred and seventy dollars a year per pole.
So the one thirty-five is the doubled amount or the previous, before the doubled amount?
No, that was just for the application fee. It used to be seventy dollars.
Okay.
Just apply for a permit and provide the bank ready information to keep the process going. And then there's an annual program fee that's on top of that. But just that fee alone really, again, on a lot of ISP budgets, just should you give a five or two pole lines, they weren't prepared for that.
So apparently.
The number breakdown too, as we looked at, and this was before Chris reran a ten days drive up through again, and reran, and we're going to do this, but the majority has half of the unserved, underserved, or the Casson Township.
All on consumers.
Just to clarify the numbers too, the two million safe number you're talking about still does not include the park area then, or doesn't?
No, it does not.
And do we have an idea of the park area? What's your?
Well, I think, Chris, you were saying that the numbers that Charter was throwing out for passing was about twelve thousand dollars for passing. So you've got to get from here to there and then calculate. So I don't, I don't know quite.
We don't have a total for that.
Yeah, but that's, but that's something, that's in the park area. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, the thought was is that part of that two million dollars is going to be contingency to get into the park and do what we need to do if we have to. Something with the B program that it would probably be, you know, within the company's ability to do that. But we will also explore what the federal park themselves are able to do as a federal entity, and if they in fact cannot qualify to pursue some type of grant themselves in their capacity. There's probably less than forty to forty-five locations within the entire park system that we're talking about. And if you can imagine how many miles it would take to just reach forty-five locations throughout that entire system. I mean, there's like three right here. One, two, you can see the three there.
Yeah.
Then there's nothing miles around. Up here in Glutton, there's five private residences and soon to be a new hotel that they want access to.
I can see those. Though Starlink may be an answer for, I mean, they just may have to go with Starlink, right?
Well, Starlink is, I don't, is it still active in that area? They started, didn't they pull off of the Robin, but is it still active?
They didn't drop satellites.
In fact, you see that green in the map right now?
Yeah.
Because I turned on the RDO player, that was the area that was, only was granted to Starlink initially for providing service. So.
It's a satellite, it's a satellite service, so they didn't, like, drop satellites out of the sky. They just decided not to fund the end equipment. So people would still have the option to connect.
Right.
If they wanted.
Right.
The limitation for some folks is trees.
Yep.
For Starlink.
I'm, yeah, I'm where I had satellite for a long time before I paid to get Charter in, so, yeah, that's.
Yeah, or cut trees down.
But, you know, you might have to cut some trees down.
And Starlink would be a problem, for instance, with these three properties down here because they are heavily, there's a very heavy canopy over top of them. Whereas the ex-fore homes along the shoreline, they have a, you know, wide open, you're in the northern sky, open directly overhead because there isn't a lot of canopy around them. So Starlink is certainly an option in those, and it will eventually be some type of satellite technology will eventually be what finishes up this effort to get every person in the country access because there are just some that are so far away. Michigan should be one of those states that today, that becomes the first line today because we've got electricity to everybody without any problem. We should be able to get fiber to everybody that is kind of the same kind of program up in Alaska and up in Montana. That's a different issue. But certainly that is.
It's just there.
In fact, the conversation I, the most recent conversation I had with the IC guy in the park was about the hotel near Glutton. And he had ordered a satellite system for it, but he didn't feel that it could support on the actual applications in there. And it won't, because each one of these guests is staying in the hotel. That's not a good way to do it. So he prioritized his areas that in the public voting board plan on his list at the moment. And if we can get fiber to him within a year, he has a satellite system to order that he's going to move up one of the pipelines and that too.
How's the cellular coverage in that area? Because you have cellular data as well.
You've got, go ahead, Chris.
It doesn't work. We were, we were out there a week and a half ago and our phones were dead. And my cell has, has one of AT&amp;T and Verizon on it, and I had no marsh or anything. I couldn't, we had to wait until we got out of there before we could make any notes about what we had saw along these roads here.
You know, if cellular companies and all that, they go over there, they mask the density of population.
Obviously, we just encouraged them to go somewhere that they weren't going to go before in Northport.
Yes, we did. Different takes.
I mean, compared to, I don't know what coverage areas are from that, and I'm not proposing that we do that, but that seems like it solves a couple of problems instead of just one problem.
Except it's the park. And they tried to put a tower up in Glen Arbor and Glen Arbor keeps saying no.
That was back, part of this, ever going back several years ago.
So the park said no, or?
No, Glen Arbor said no.
Glen Arbor said no.
They got a free ninety-six.
Well, you know, you can't have your cake and eat it too. Perhaps if you want service, you'll have to swallow some pills here and there.
Yeah, but the people are at the effect of.
Well, the people have to push the township to approve it.
But I believe the park could do the tower on their own without township approval, can't they?
Yes, it could.
And they're the ones asking us to serve some of this, so maybe they have some, some skin in the game too.
That was our thinking, that they were willing to participate.
I have one bar on Voltrider's Lake, and it's because we're in the park. The park, park service will not have towers. And they've tried for years to get something in Glen Arbor. You can go talk to their board.
Let's just.
They're afraid they're going to turn into frogs if they give five G. I'm sorry.
But because of their reluctance to have a tower, we're put in a position of spending an excessive amount of money to get there for things they want anyway. That's, that's unattainable, but I.
We gave electricity to everybody.
Who, who agreed to have poles put through their front yard to get it.
And paid to have it.
Yes, and paid to have it.
And helped dig the holes.
So I think where we are, which is answering your question, it will be the one point two to cover the dense area and somebody outlining it and you can pick up, but the two million, we know will do everything. And Chris just said he thought maybe some seed money could, too much of it being the park systems, those forty-five homes that need it. So we know it would be more than two. The advantage of doing it now is Charter's there. Yeah. Let me tell you, prices are going up daily. So if they leave and pull out their teams, they're not there to get back, our standard's going to go up exponentially.
This is twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, that it would be an obligation for us. What, how long does a project take?
They were, well, they don't know until they get it, but they are going to be complete with their RDO by the end of this year, they think. Or, no, no, Chris, she said the first, the second quarter of next year, I believe is what she said, if they would be paying for their RDO. So since they are there and they're building, you know, these homes are adjacent to the area they're already in, it's most cost effective to do it now while they're there. But it would be next year's budget. I doubt they could start this year, but you'd want to set the contract so that you won't come in at this rate while they're there. And in terms of funding, in addition to the Robin, we should have put our eggs in that basket totally because we knew it was, it was a long shot for most of our community, even though they had lots of money to serve road, they went for the bigger road areas. We also have been working with both of our state legislators, both Senator DeMose and Representative Kofia. And Senator DeMose did offer a bill for us, for Robin, and it made it through all the committees, and Representative Kofia did the same thing in the House. So we had it on both sides. And less than a week before the final decision was made on the budget, the agreement that came out that all these dollars were coming in from the federal government, and so we could, like, the both parties agreed to is to pull all, all of the funding out too. And so we could let the, both parties agreed to is to pull all of our funding out.
Is there still some possibility though, and didn't we hear from the senator and from the governor's office?
I am contacting Senator DeMose this week and asking now that we know what we need. But it's a long shot and I already talked with Representative Kofia about it. But, you know, he hasn't agreed that we would offer an amendment, whether it will go anywhere, I don't know. I think there's nothing lost by offering, but you can't count on that because.
It's worth trying, but when I first sat in the first couple of meetings, I was nearly assured by the previous county administrator that those ARPA funds to do that what we're doing right now that are not there. So I think the only sane thing to do is to plan on that money not being there. That was when there's people actually were voting for it. Now that's gone, so.
I agree. Maybe we ought to send, send Chad a bill.
Yes, yes. Nothing against Chad, but it was, I mean, he was reading the tea leaves on the ground at the time. I get that.
And that was the word we were hearing.
It was. It definitely was.
It was.
So I need you to clarify what you just said. That the, that the, would you clarify that?
When we had our first couple of meetings, we, this, this is the first time we saw this stuff and there was like the pulse on the ground once. There's ARPA money coming. You're going to have ARPA money to finish it. That money's going to be there.
We tried twice.
It wasn't a sure thing, but it was like, relax, be calm, it's coming.
No.
So for Sean's.
We tried twice.
So for Sean's checklist, for budget, budget purposes, 1.2 to 2.
Well, yeah, 2, tell them 2, put it in as 2. It probably won't be 2, but put it in as 2. And know that you could probably spread that 2 over 2 years.
We cannot. We, we still haven't figured out the rest of what we've obligated. We can't add another, I'm sorry, but we can't add another 2 million to that.
You know what? We made a commitment to cover this county.
We can't do it in 2024 and you cannot.
I, I, I think today we were to gather the information and get the whole list together and then set priorities.
Looking for more funds.
We can't commit our dollars. We cannot tell these people. I have practiced and practiced.
I cannot, I cannot.
Cover each other then.
I have not come up with the words.
Could I, could I?
Could I finish? Would I be allowed to finish?
Could I have, could I have the floor, please? We, we agreed today's purpose was to get our wish list together, to get all the numbers, and then we have to set priorities. And I think it's, I think it's too early right now until we hear from HVAC and, and we see what people sent to Sean on our priorities before we say we can or we can't do anything.
Yeah, can I speak to that for a moment as I'm, as I'm going through this stuff and trying to put it in my head in a, in a way I would process it from my previous situation? We have, we have a fair amount of operational things here, and we have capital outlay things. And almost anyone else looks at those things separately. They don't try to swallow them all at once. I mean, no matter what we do with broadband or HVAC, it's not coming out of tax revenue from this year. It's not, there's no, there's no, there's no scenario I see where we just look at this budget and say, okay, we're going to do all the broadband. We'll do the HVAC. We're going to do all these other things. And so the rest of the county budget just has to take 8.5 million of their operations for next year. That's not happening. I suggest we divide this into two pieces so we can move forward. I'm not a big fan of a huge budget amendment, but these all things come out of other funding that we have to decide how we're going to do. My proposal would be to, let's look at the operational side of things, carve out those things. I'm not a big fan of that big of a budget amendment. But it just seems too much to chew off all at one time because they're not coming from the same revenue anywhere. You guys are going to have to come up, John and Sean, with some sort, some way of financing these bigger capital expenditures that it just seems like we're tying way too much all together that we can't, we can't process. And what, let's say we, we're right now, we decide not to, to do copiers. That gives us $26,000 to spend towards around nine or 10 million worth of possible capital obligations. It's just silly to even go through that process. We should decide an operational budget, call it good, and then if we have to do an amendment to figure out how these bigger things are done, we do that. That's just my suggestion.
And I interrupted Melinda. Let her finish and then Gwen.
Thank you very much.
I think Sean's got some direction for us.
I'm sorry. I didn't interrupt at both of you. I'm sorry.
Actually, I, this is what I was going to say around the seam line. We, we cannot commit in 2024 an additional $2 million. I think what we have to do is start looking for some other form, continue to look for other grants and other forms of, of funding. Back to the state again. I don't think the state has distributed yet the rest of their ARPA dollars. Are they still sitting on several million dollars worth of ARPA? Okay, I haven't heard what it's committed to. So that would be interesting to see what they had committed it to. So if not the state ARPA funds, perhaps some other ARPA funds, but we just, or not ARPA, but some other grant funds. The, the other thing I was going to say is, you know, after this, after working so well with Cherryland Electric, I'm deeply disappointed in what consumers did because that's got, that's a phenomenal amount of money that they're, they're, they're sticking their, their customers. And, and there's a difference. They're not their owner members. Those are customers. So they can just keep hammering on them and and I just think that that's, that's just sad because they would, they have the ability to help serve those people out there too. And they're just choosing not to.
Gwen.
When the Point broadband contract was approved, we held $850,000 in reserve. We hoped we could give some to townships who had applied for money. But we didn't, but we held on to the money because we were unsure. There was a commitment to cover the county in Point. We started with Point. We knew Bro, Ardo, charter was working in Ardo areas. And the assumption was we would complete the whole county. I have teachers who are trying to teach. 25% of the kids at Glen Lake School do not have internet in their homes. I have a nurse, I have nursing, a nursing student who has to drive to the end of her road at night to complete her work. I have people trying to run businesses who go to the library and park in the parking lot. When we started this project, the commitment was to the whole county. I have had people write letters for Robin. They went to a meeting. They trusted that the county considered them just as important as everyone else. I trusted that the commissioners would maintain their support to every citizen in the county. This was a commitment to extend broadband, which is no longer just a, oh gosh, I got it. Isn't that fun? I can play games. You need broadband for just about everything now. So it's an essential service. We have tried twice. We have money in reserve. And we have a company that if we lock down a contract now, we will save money. We have heard that there are funding mechanisms we can use to get a less expensive contract now than we may have to commit to later. I challenge us to come up with the verbiage to tell these people who trusted us that they were just as important as everyone else in the county. Gosh. You know, I think it's wonderful you drive down the, your road to do your homework. That's great. Keep it up. That's the American spirit. I don't think that should be our message. So we have an opportunity, I'm almost done. We have an opportunity to lock in a contract that these two people have worked hard to get. A couple of months ago, I heard 4 million and I said, we're screwed. They got it down. We have a commitment. These are all our people. We may have to use some different funding mechanisms. But this is our obligation to our people.
Anybody else before we turn it back over to Sean to bring closure to this and, and thank Chris and Patricia? And thanks all the work you've done, Chris, to bring it down. But any other commissioners?
Well, my, my final comment would be is that we, we didn't commit county dollars to doing the entire county by internet. We did not do that. And I guess we really have a situation of what is, where we're spending the dollars obviously makes, you know, we also were told that some of these other providers were getting ARPA dollars to do some of those areas. That, that was what was all in the consideration. But what, what is the math on, on some of these homes when we get way up in that corner? What, what does that cost to bring internet to some of those homes? Is it, you know, thousands and thousands compared to a few hundred in other places? So it's, I mean, there's some math to figure out there, but.
I'll just go brief. I don't discount the need for internet. I mean, that's part of, it's just we have decisions to make and we can't do all of it. I'm not saying this is not the thing we don't do, but, you know, I, I, there's just not a magic pot of money. This might be the thing we do. But there's, then you, you can't say yes to everything. There's going to be no's that need to be said. That's just, that's just the reality of the situation. So I go back to my original comment. I think we need to, you know, we don't have a contract to encourage anyone to do anyway. I don't know how far we are from anything that's actually a full proposal. What, what's, what's, what's the timeline right now before someone would say, this is going to be 1,686,000 who will serve these exact spots and we could sign on a dotted line? I don't think we're there or even close. A week. Well, bring that.
Nora said she could put it through the system and we can.
Then bring that to us in a week and, and we can.
Cam.
I'm sorry. I was late, so I'm, I'm just, I'm going to be silent for a minute.
I, I appreciate your work, but just a little bit more from 1.2 to 2 million, just really scares me. Okay. Lethernaw County, some of the places, School Lake Road, there's not many houses down School Lake Road. You know, some of the places are going to have to not get it as fast as they want. Just, you live there because you want to be there, you know, that's just the way it is and you can't. The commitment to Lethernaw County is fine to everybody, but that's like, that's like as an officer, I'll move out and save everybody. No, you're not. So I, I don't, I, that's not going to happen.
They've already waited.
They what?
They've already waited.
We all wait. I mean, I'm five miles west of Traverse City and I can tell you internet horror stories. I still don't have good internet where I am five miles west. So it's, it's, we all have those horror stories. Yeah, I drive up to the end of the road to get internet service.
Just follow, some of those houses sit on the lake. I don't know what.
School Lake is not on the lake.
Well, I don't know. I'm just looking at some of these spots that are unserved are have to be fairly affluent people though in some of those homes.
They're on School Lake.
I'm not, I'm not being specific, I guess. Some spots, there are probably people who have resources to get things there themselves.
Patricia, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And I, I wanted Patricia and Chris to get a closing comment and, and yes.
If, if, I understand fully where you're coming from. Gwen is correct. You didn't make a commitment. I feel that as a fellow researcher, because I was on that board at the time. One thing you might look at is how to do it differently. And maybe we start with the 1.2 million, you can get as many as you can and don't worry about 2 million. And then we try to come up with the rest of that as, as is possible, but at least it gets you started with something that you could put in this year's budget carry over to next year. And that's a reasonable thing to look at. So it will all be coming in the 24 budget. You might be able to start part of that, there's a, there's time also to look at other options for funding that might be possible, but I can tell you that none of the, none of the dollars that are coming down the line are going to be available until 25. None of these due until 26. So that's a long timeout for a county that is basically ready to go. So I'm going to kind of think outside blocks and think of ways and ask John, also the wood department and also Jones as to how it might be possible to put this way and capitalize on the heat and air because we do guarantee the price will go up hugely if you try to do it later on. We'll keep working with legislators and try to find some alternative funding sources to reverse, but at least think about the 1.2 and do what you can.
Thank you.
Hey, John has his hand up.
John. Yes.
Has it ever been established through funding, special assessment?
I was thinking of that.
You can't do that for just some people.
Yeah, you can. Sure you can. Oh my God.
You can.
Do you need charges per, or is it not more appropriate to have a special assessment on those? Then it would be addressed in the contract and then.
Yes, John, you're really a good question. I think when you're looking at.
Special assessment to the entire county.
I don't feel that those others that fall outside of the Robin they're just going to look at that as part of what they wanted to do. I mean, in your, in the position of assessing for those residents, what you didn't assess for people in certain townships that receive the same service. So, but for the others that are outlined, that might be a possibility. I mean, it's a pretty part of the cost.
I think it would be helpful to get something in writing from them so that we know, we've had some experience with prices changing on, on things. So I, I, I think for our purposes, we'd like to get a proposal, right? With, with, with a couple of different options that we can then plug into. Sean, right?
Yes, sir. So that's easy to do. We didn't want to do that. Chris, did you have some other comments?
Um, yeah, certainly. Um, just to respond to a couple of things I heard there. What Patricia just said, yeah, the mix wrong of funding that's coming out of BE funding is probably not going to be available until 2025, as she said. It's not going to get started until probably mid-year next year to define it. There's a lot of things going on, but the reality is we won't see anything happen before 2025 as far as any more funding coming in. To the issue about costs rising. In 2022, costs rose more than 20% on the materials. That's documented. Everybody knew it. In 2023, it's continuing to rise. I don't know exactly what that is this year to date right now. But the thing to be concerned with is that the BE money, as they do start to ramp up, is going to tax the system even worse and it becomes an issue of supply and demand. All of the suppliers around the world that have been able to supply material, equipment, fiber and bulbs and all that stuff, they're jacking their prices up every chance they get and it just does continue to rise. So I don't see it into it right now and I'm really afraid of what the costs are going to be in 2025. Because that's when I, nine out of 10 counties that have been waiting to do something will get started. Here with the 1 in 10, at this point, it still has an opportunity to beat some of that rush. And to the idea of what it costs to get to those far off ones, there are residents within Claylawn County that before we got started, we're being quoted 20 to 30 to 40,000 dollars to run cable or by 100 feet up their driveway. That hasn't changed either and that's what we're trying to eliminate entirely is those longer off situations. This plan that you're seeing includes a lot of those homes that are just one off. Their neighbors, they're close to the road, they're already part of the system, but therefore are to be off the road and they can't get it. And this is going to address almost all of those. The only area that we are looking at leaving out is the park system. And I'd really like to just handle that one separately as a separate project because that goes to extremes that the entire rest of the county doesn't see. So I do appreciate the time and I am available to answer any questions any of the commissioners may have. Feel free to contact me one-on-one if you'd like. But at this point, I think the quicker we move, the better it's going to be overall financially because we're going to continue to chase those rising costs as we go into 2024.
Thank you, Chris. You have been a very, a very good investment for us and thank you for all your leadership. And Patricia, you too. Thank you. Sean, do we want to do anything or take a short break while we switch topics?
I think we can take a break here. Let me just make sure we line up resources here. I did hear Commissioner Rentshroth's question about funding and I would like to come back to that, but just in the name of, we have Judge Kompowski, what I was hoping to do. You okay? So what I would love to do instead is kind of to your point, I, my recommendation that stay to the agenda, let the judge address issue. I think it's a relative, just to answer questions. I'd love to have the discussion to the extent we can with Gary on HVAC. And then what I'd like to do is based on all of that, maybe we can have some dialogue about what keeps coming back then. When I say a finding.
Sounds good. Willing to take a five-minute break, but let's make it five so we can get right back to work. Thank you.
You got to go down School Lake Road.
Commissioner Auger.
Yes.
Sean.
Good morning.
Okay, so I'm getting hurried outside all over the place. This one is the, let me just set the stage. We, we had the court come through previously to remember Pam from Childcare and the judge was here. I think what we had done was pull off to the side, the discussion around staffing levels. She has had a staffing level request on there, so this was simply my promise, fulfilling my promise to have the judge be able to address that and anything else. She would like to answer questions, but there is no material available which she can.
So I passed around the EDS that we put together, uh, May or June, and we have had a full time probate, got the probate register through now and it has made a great deal of difference. I'm not sure if I need to go through the rationale again. It's pretty similar to what I wrote earlier, but Sean has crunched up numbers that this would be an increase of 11,879 dollars total to have the person move for the fifth day. And talking about monies, the public court also collects monies that we donate out for attorneys and GALs and things like that. And Chris Mattis has a habit of, but more times to do than that. And already this year, she has collected $10,400 in reimbursements. So I'm asking for 11,000 of us, but we contribute money to the general fund on a regular basis and we're not even done with the year. So that, if you have questions about the need, I'm happy to answer them. Those are the numbers.
Chris does a wonderful job as I'm going through probate right now and she's been extremely helpful. She's always busy, very informative. Couldn't have a better person, so. You know, we need to give her the fifth day.
I would agree with that. You tried four and it doesn't work. So thank you for trying.
Again, we're not, we're not going to make decisions until we're all done, but any, anybody got questions for the judge or comments?
Not at this point. Thank you for coming and thank you for the work you do.
So there's a motion here.
Well, this is, this is workshop.
Oh, this is from last spring. Okay. Okay, thank you.
If you remember, I think what we.
Part-time, we moved it up, part-time, we added extra hours.
Let us say June 3.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lutner.
The only thing I caution ourselves is to not get wrapped up in the argument and I understand what sometimes a department head might look at and say, well, I'm bringing in this revenue, therefore I want to spend it. But we, we can't, we can't look at that argument when it comes to our budget. We have some departments that bring in lots of dollars and we depend on those dollars is where I'm going to leave that.
Any other questions for the judge? Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
And if you have other questions, you know where to find me.
Well, Judge, Gwen would much rather get your extra day than complete our broadband project.
You know, you're funny, but you're not that funny.
Some things are priority of ours, okay?
So the next item was HVAC and I, I think that wants to tee this up, but I know the full request was it would be great to be able to sit down and have the discussion on both sides of this in terms of whole HVAC as initially presented and also past with, with partial wealth, with heat pumps. So I'm not sure if we can do all of that, but Gary was notified on his days when he's not with the county that we needed to have a discussion, so I wanted to do that. I had the hallway discussion, I related part of that last time, your 70 amp drop by kind of thing, and maybe we can get into that thing. I don't know if you wanted to.
Sure. So I think for myself, as well as for the commissioners that are new, that have not really known the history of this, I had a opportunity this morning to have a conversation with John Richards, who is the engineer from Apollo Engineering. And he gave me a little bit more of a historical perspective on this, that the discussion about the, and I know that both Jerry and Gary can collaborate or corroborate, I'm not sure which one, but anyhow, they could confirm these items. But this discussion about the HVAC system here in this building has been ongoing for many years, at least five. And so at that time, I think five years ago, there was a very in-depth, in-depth discussion and assessment done of the current operating system and what could be done to make it more efficient. The current system with the heat pumps, heat pumps themselves are systems that are used, you know, to this day. The challenge is that we've seen is because we have 90 of them here and they have about a 15-year, 12 to 15-year shelf life, if you will, or use life. And we're at the end of that, of that system's life now. And so we're starting to see more and more of the heat pumps fail. So the recommendation was to look at a different system that would have more efficiencies in it. There are currently issues with ventilation that was initially put into this building that create some additional inefficiencies, I think, with the heat pumps. But they are still operational. There are some systems that will need to be replaced if we would continue with the current heat pumps, that chilling, chilling tower as well as, you know, some of the other, the external unit, I think, will probably need some upgrades. So there, that was part of the rationale for looking at a different system that would in theory present some efficiencies that we currently don't have in the current system. So all of that being said, after talking with John this morning, he is more than willing to come and address the Building and Grounds Committee on the 25th and bring some of that historical information along with. But the other component, I think, that, that John and I talked about this morning is that as, as the board has allowed these discussions to go on, there's been the reality that we've had to replace these heat pumps. So we are now at about 25% of the heat pumps have been replaced. We're fast approaching 30%. So the longer that we delay the process, the more monies will be going into the older system. And at what point is that tipping point, if you will, for the board to consider us going forward with another 10 years in the current system versus making a change now and then using those 10 years to look at what would be the most efficient system going forward? So I don't have, that's not a recommendation, it's just a consideration, I think, at this point. So I know Gary has some of that information to share with us. I will also say that John and I had a conversation that was unique from the standpoint of when is the best time to bring this project forward? From the standpoint that if we look at this project and prove the dollars in 2024, we're putting forward a project that this board may not see through fruition. And so, you know, could we get through with another year is with the current system is was part of the discussion? And then allow the incoming board in 2025 to make the determination if they want to move forward with this project since it would be something that that board then would be encumbered with in terms of the reality of it. So I'm just trying to give you that scope, all things to be, be considered. And he did feel that we could get by with a system for another year or so, but that was the discussion.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is there any reason, I mean, heat pumps are not a thing of the past. Is there any reason we, if we replace the chilling tower, that we just can't stay with heat pumps? And why do we have to keep saying, replace them?
Well, if I may, five years ago, when the building study was put into place, that was the recommendation of that engineering firm that due to the EPA standards and all of the things that go with that, that's the recommendation they came up with. Also, I point out that when they did the study as far as the maintenance costs, repair costs, energy usage and all that, that's why they came up with this plan of this chill beam system. And they felt as though it would take a lot less energy effort as far as the long-term running of the whole thing. That's where that come about. But then reality hit us and it was to the point where these heat pumps now are a little more, I'm going to just say a better decision to replace them as we need.
But I mean, isn't, isn't it possible to keep having heat pumps?
Yes. Yes. Answer your question there. And they're a fine product and the companies that we deal with, suppliers we deal with, are a strong, reliable firm. And now we find out that, of course, these two companies we dealt with basically joined forces, but the quality is far superior.
And are they developing heat pumps so they will keep improving?
Absolutely.
Because it is not an old technology. It's a newer.
It's an improved technology and with the refrigerants, the motors, the EPA standards, of course, they have to meet a certain criteria before they can be put in. Well, when you look at 17 years ago, what's here was top of the line then. 17 years now, you know, everything's going to change. So I hope that answered your question.
Just quickly, when, when they, when John Richards, I think is the name, when he comes, I'd be looking for very specific information, not that there will be energy savings. I want, I mean, because we have to do return on investment calculation. So I want, I want a hard number that says this is our engineering estimated savings and then, and then the same thing on the repair maintenance thing, but not based on an antiquated system sitting here now. That answer should be based on we've replaced the, all of the pumps and then what are the savings in maintenance? Because we're making a decision between two paths. And one is to replace the existing heat pump system and one is to install this new system. So he can't, the comparison cannot be the repair costs on our existing system because we would not, that's baked into our choice to continue with it. So there'd have to be, okay, we installed the newest technology heat pumps, we make the changes, that's, that's the baseline, that's, you got to pretend that's in this building. And then we put your system in. What will be the savings from your system over these new heat pumps, both in energy savings and in maintenance costs? That's the only sentient way to look at those two things, so.
That would be quite a, an arduous task, only because they can use the nameplate rating of any device that is put in here, but then it would need some sort of time to actually prove that out. In other words, energy usage and all that, but I mean, that's a fair question to ask. And with the certain standards that EPA requires now, it is attainable, but like you said, that would be the engineers to come up with and give you that.
Yeah, if they advocate, I mean, we obviously have to look at our taxpayers and say, yes, we spent an additional 3.4 million on this and we expect to have that returned within five years. And we can't do that with them saying, well, you're going to save some energy, there's going to be some less repair costs. That's not an adequate criteria.
Cam.
Yeah, this is great. And I think this is the melding of what this Energy Futures Task Force wants to offer to our situation here. I just, there's so many grants out there, I think, coming down the pipe too, to look at, you know, institutions going more energy efficient with renewable energy. So I just feel like maybe our best course would be to just take it slow on making a huge change and let this amazing group of people coming together for the good of the county give some input. So I just, I just feel this, this energy coming together and I think it's very positive. So, and it just exactly answers what you said, you know, decisions based on that returns that we know can.
On metrics.
On metrics, yes. In real, in real facts, yes.
We're in a situation now where in the critical areas of heat pumps go beyond an economical way of repairing them, we replace them. Currently, right now, as of this date, we've got 23 of them replaced in this building out of 95.
Oh, good.
Now, there will be another one that's going to be replaced in Circuit Court Judges Chamber.
Seventy-two.
What's, what's the timeline of those 23? When were those started to be replaced? Those have been replaced within the last three years? So some of those are five years old, the earliest ones.
What's the cost on installation and the heat pump?
Okay, currently, right now, we're at $10,200 and that's, that's a big mean value. We did run into a situation where we ran into some stripper heads and some other piping that really was a mess to get around. Okay, but these figures here are based on what, pretty much the general rules of this building. We are going to have some that are going to require extra costs because we have to get rid of the stripper heads. They go off, it's a mess. Certain piping and conduits are in the way. It was just the way they were put in 17 years ago.
Would it be advantageous to go ahead and buy some pumps now instead of whatever I talks about is it's going to get more money, it's going to get more, I mean. Instead of going 20 or 30% for a year, three years, you would have a free pump.
We are currently doing that very issue. Now, we have eight different sizes of heat pumps in this building. Well, size-wise, we've been telling you twice as far as BTU ratings and things like that. So in answer to your question, we do and are currently trying to get a fairly decent price as far as that long range. What I'm finding though, strategically done, if you will, is the lower tonnage units are failing.
Quicker.
Quicker and they're almost to the point where you can pretty much count on. For the larger ones, which is the, this room, the court rooms and any of the community rooms, they seem to be, and I'm not superstitious, but they seem to be lasting a lot longer with minor repairs.
Which seems to me we really need to be convinced that making a total redo of the building is practical because we could, for about half what we were talking about, it seems like we could have a brand new system that they're currently using when they're building new construction.
And we wouldn't have to spend that half all at once either.
I did want to just mention and remind everyone that the bid that was sent out in the anticipation of that was 3.5 million. And that's based on projections from more than a year ago. We did not receive any bids, so we really don't have a comparable number to even bring before the board right now to say what would the actual cost be? So I think that to Commissioner Ross's point, there may be technology that presents itself in the next few years that might give us more options, but I know that we're in a difficult situation, decisions have to be made and we have to make sure that we're taking care of the building. of the building. So I do wanna mention, Gary had also talked about some of the ancillary costs. So we know that the replacement of the heat pumps approximately, we're gonna say approximately $900 to $1 million to replace the heat pumps, maybe a little bit more than that.
At this current time, our time check is at DNW. And if we use a base price of $12,000 per heat pump, now like I said, what we're doing right now with the sizes that we're dealing with is $10,200. But if we go that route and least that's, you've got a base figure to work on. But bringing up the subject that you've talked about is also you've got ceiling issues, fire protection, but what you're talking about is the cooling tower, which is out there right now, is showing some severe issues. Right now, it's to the point we're able to keep this thing running, obviously. I mean, it's running, it's running well, but it sends little warning signs and no pumps and noises that are concerning. Because if the heat, if that cooling tower does go down for some reason and we are stuck to the point where we can't get apart or what have you, we'll have to find other ways because without that cooling tower, the whole building will shut down, I mean, as far as heat model. We're still at the boilers, we'll still have heat, but these heat pumps do both, heating and cooling. That's the critical one. And then I just need to add one more thing. The air handle that's downstairs feeds fresh air filter and I do have those rummy ultraviolet lights installed in there just for air purification. That, of course, is running basically 60% of what it should because there's some very expensive motors in there that burn down. You know, there's three, three out of six.
So the cost for that, I know that we worked on getting some initial concepts for that, so to replace the, that unit is approximately?
To, we gave a combined price on both of them with a better system that's available right now, the price on both of them would be $390,000. Right now, the systems we have, after the cooling tower, one, the back room, the air control panel, those are undersized.
So Gary.
Million four, million five.
Those two prices you were just talking about, those are for what now?
They're for both units.
The cooling tower?
The cooling power and air.
And air handler?
Yeah.
Okay. To replace those, to replace those is around $350,000 each?
$390 for both of them.
Oh, $390 for both of them.
And that's also a different brand and what's selling.
Sure, but is it compatible?
It is better.
Better yet. So, yeah, taking into consideration everything we've heard over the last five years, I'm more encouraged by what I'm hearing with these, the new heat pumps as opposed to what we were trying to get a few years back. So I certainly would say, at least for now, let's continue on with the heat pump system. If we have to replace those two pieces in the future, then that's, that's what we do. But we are taking, a couple of other things taken into consideration, because I know it's hard on you because you said you've got a lot of stuff to work around once you get up in there. It was not designed in such a way and I know that there are companies who don't wanna touch this building for that reason.
That's exactly right.
And I had to touch this building, if we were going to, would, would be huge disruption to our employees. We'd be moving offices around and.
Well, then you also have the thing over here which you have to be concerned about. Oh, I didn't see that. It falls down.
Yep.
You know, that type of thing, still.
So, I mean, yeah, I say let's continue with heat pumps and we're going to have, we're just gonna have a budget for that ongoing maintenance piece.
Good.
Yeah, two questions are actually a question, a thought. I mean, the newer heat pumps with, I know the motor technology in there, they last longer than the motors are there, so it's reasonable to expect a longer life out of the place, out of the things we're replacing than what was in originally, correct?
Well, our original problem stems from the fact that the refrigerant that's used in DC pumps, it's called R22, okay? It is basically what's left in the world, once it's gone, you can't, you can't, you're not supposed to buy it because they want it replaced, EPA. Now, there's a new blend of refrigerant that's in these that are supposed to be, first term, like, even though it's still treated as though it's toxic, I mean, we, that's why I have an EPA license for things like that. Going back to the evolution of things, yeah, every time we've been, oh, there's something new out there. We just had to complete a course for the new refrigerant for Terry and Train, which we had to have an eight-hour course for. Okay, so what I'm saying is, the stuff that we're gonna be putting in here, of course, is totally certified for a purpose and it's safe.
That answers part of the question, but the question is, is if I, if I put a new heat pump in to the standards that you have it, is the life expectancy the same, less or more than the original equipment that was installed 17 years ago?
Well, that's a very good question. Right now, we can say unepitically it can be the same, but the way things are made, we can actually go beyond that. But until we actually realize that, it's kind of stepping on that thin branch on a crew.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to, like, we would, if it went three days less, we would call you up here and give you 50 wet lashes or something. I'm just asking for a reasonable estimate based on what your knowledge of the technology.
Yeah. Sean had a question. Sean, Sean was gonna say something.
I just didn't, I still haven't got an answer to my question, so that's.
There must be, there must be some sort of data out there that shows the average life of these new pumps.
There is.
So.
And we can find out.
Okay, maybe then.
I mean, it's like I said, we wanna actually have something that's going back to that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then my other question was, is, I mean, there's mobilization costs. Every time you come out and do one heat pump, you bring a crew out and this is, this is not done under our existing contract with you. These are all extra to the existing DNW contract with yourself, correct?
For that contract, I'm sorry, when the heat pump, when we have that proposal for that, no, that start to finish. That is about.
So, so, yeah.
I have a license here.
Yeah.
Let me get Gary.
In the heat pumps, that's different from your contract.
Sean, you, you look like you have something to say.
So I'm just trying to finish going through the rest of, I'll give you a second, but so when we do a heat pump, that's totally separate from our existing maintenance contract with you and it would be reasonable, I guess, in my experience, to expect there to be some cost savings when you did more than one at a time, if you come up.
We are doing that already?
Well, there's one administrator's office now, so they, they're.
They're scheduled to do.
It's a matter of how many, when we can get the heat pumps, which also applies to that, but then the ceiling, ceiling grid, all that, it's a lot of extra time to take them down and reinstall.
Okay.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
How many heat pumps are down now?
Right now, there are 18 of them.
Are not functioning?
They're not, but now, meaning the doors are still running, so we have air circulation, but as far as refrigeration or heating, cooling, there are valves, various compressors, reversing valves and that. That's why I said, when we get into a critical area like offices or groupings, that is a critical area and those are addressed, like the ones that we are doing right now.
I guess, yeah.
So how much R22 do you, do you use in here? Is it a constant thing? You have to.
I reclaim every thing I can, but in answer to your question, 30 pounds, a 30-pound cylinder, it can be used up in no time at all.
Yes, $900 for 30 pounds. And I just wonder, there's a, yeah, it's 349 for 10, I just, I just checked it, but is that going up? You said there's a limited supply of it, right?
Yeah, that's what we're going.
I mean, R12 tripled overnight.
And we're, we're not supposed to use that long.
Well, I think, I think we've heard that most people want to go slowly and, and consider a, a plan that would be buy in bulk, fix a portion of them and, and make, maybe make it a two-year project to do that.
Yeah, and I agreed, I would probably, on the scope of this, not that, I don't love DNW no well, but if we're launching on this scope, we would have to look at some sort of bid process on that to go forward.
And just from a, try to stay in the finance swing lane here, from my perspective, I think what I heard is, we need to summarize that, but there is a, there's a sequence that is involved with what I think I've heard Gary lay out and that he talked about component I feel like there's a, there's a decision tree underneath the decision to go slow, which is, what, selfishly, what do you want in 2024? There's X number of, of units that we would budget for, or a percentage of the remainder of the building. There's a consideration on the cooling tower and air exchange. And as you start going down that path, I think there's, you know, what would we want to collectively think of that project as being? And I think the, the one thing I just wanna make sure while you're here, Gary, the, I believe part of what Commissioner Rex wrote was asking, but don't let me put words in your mouth, is, is example over time has been, if I'm gonna go change the light bulb, I'm gonna guess the next six are gonna go out, I'm gonna do all six right now. Is there, is there, when I, when I talk about sequence, is it really go slow one at a time as the great fix? Or would you, is there something to discuss where you start looking at zones because the, the impact on employees and where you're going and buying bulk? Like, is there something to the go slow plan that?
Well, see, that's a very good analogy, that's a very good question, because we're talking about eight different sizes of heat pumps, okay? So if we did plan that, or six or whatever, that way they could be pre-ordered and pre-configured to the existing setup. So that's, that's another option we're gonna.
So you could do like, I mean, we have 18 right now, we know that do not operate. So you could, I mean, with 70 left, you could do, well, 18 a year, four years is 72, or 25 a year, and three years is 75.
We've already done 23, so, right?
Yeah, that's the math, that's seven some left, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, that's, and I, yeah.
Well, that's something to be considered, then.
So when I was putting the, this is, I have not been able to keep up with it, but when we started this in June, I threw out a number just to put placeholder in an initial proposed budget, that was 15 heat pumps at $10,000 each, just assuming that we were gonna have to spend that. Turns out, it's already more than that and the cost has gone up. And so I, I'm not quite sure, open to thoughts on, I think there's a, we need to get to a recommended path, that if you start to break down, what would, what would you be comfortable with? What would you be comfortable with from any budgeting standpoint in terms of sequencing and the approach to that? And it's, I'm just not sure how to take that next step to end up with a, here's what we would plan for for 2024 and then be.
And for, for budget purposes, I think it's gonna be easy to come up with a number and maybe, maybe.
This building in sight.
Building in ground with, with John and whoever else.
Yeah.
We know that there will be more heat pumps that are gonna fail, so at least we can use that.
Right.
But now, if we go with basically, well, my estimate is $5,000 each, that way when they come in under, it puts more towards the higher premiums with that help.
One last thing I forgot to mention, the administrators, we don't forget, is that the other thing we asked at Building in Sight is an updated engineer's estimate for the last system. She had mentioned that was three and a half, was two and a half years, two years ago, so in order to continue our math and justification, that the engineer should be able to put pencil to paper and give us, okay, this is my estimate as of, starting in 2024, of the alternate But I think, I think I hear, I agree with your comments, I mean, I think this board is gonna, it's gonna have to be some real razzle-bazzle on that new system.
Razzle.
That's a technical term in engineering, we use all the time, razzle-bazzle.
Called a wing and a prayer.
But it's, I mean, there's gotta be a return on investment there that is.
So I think we have enough for a budget number and, and I think that's all we wanted today, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I would have to see some strong justification for tearing up the building and starting all over.
Yeah, I'd kind of.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you for including me in this.
Thanks, guys.
I appreciate it.
We could just buy coats for everybody.
That'll work out very well.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
He said something.
Little wack.
Yeah. Just what size coat you take, you know, just kinda.
Large.
Large, okay, write it down.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in on your day away from here.
Yeah, thanks.
No, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Gladly to be here.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
So where do you do a time check on, I believe the desire was trying to wrap up here, if we could. So if that's the case, I would love to jump to one of the things that I handed out and I think my intention here is to kinda try to get at where Commissioner Rex wrote was going during the prior discussion and see if I hit the mark.
Can we interrupt? Do we have to be done at noon? I, I think we have a little bit longer. I mean, let's, this is our last time we're gonna have Glenn with us. So I, I think.
If it takes a little longer, it takes a little longer.
You do.
We should be done sooner.
12:30, 12:50 is fine.
I can stay as long as we need to.
Okay.
Okay, let, let me start with the, I handed out a document that is called Budget Example Funding Impact Comparison.
Right.
So it, great risk of personal peril here because I, this starts doing all the things that anybody that, that something else, it starts with a bunch of disclaimers, including the fact that the trailer recommends that not do this. So it includes projections, it includes words in here that are likely to offend anybody. So these are simply examples and they're not, I try not to use the word scenarios because these are not a recommendation in any way, but what I wanted to get to was to tie, try to tie back to a discussion we previously had when John was up here, if you remember back, six weeks or more, probably now, when we were talking about how to think about funding beyond what is, what is operationally generated from our tax base. I think this, this was my attempt to, to kind of frame it and then have some discussion around, that is all I'm trying to accomplish. And so let me walk down, starting on that example one column, and there was some discussion about this on Monday, with what was included in this initial proposed budget, just a starting point, we were at a general fund drawdown, meaning we were gonna spend more than we put in revenue wise in the general fund, by $965,000, so call it a million dollars, just for round numbers. Included in what was submitted, but not, not in the budget itself, have been the parade of departments and requests that have come through. And so when you add all of those things up, there's, you're actually $5.8 million, call it, funding needed beyond where we're starting with the general fund balance. Included in that are a few things where I took the liberty of just swagging a number. So if you'll go with me on those, the, you know, we had a discussion, for example, on substance abuse. What I did was, I took $22,000, I heard that number come up, I believe, Commissioner Rex wrote, as an opportunity to actually reduce what traditionally has been in the Board of Commissioners substance abuse line and still try to fund the program. So please don't take that as Sean suggesting that, but just to get to a number, I did a few things like that. So $22,000 opportunity, so a good guy on the Board of Commissioner budget, I left the county infrastructure. I left the county infrastructure items, so the wording still ties hopefully to your cheat cheat of what's out there.
Are those the storm drains?
Nope, those are just all the items that on this yes no page that I, that we've been kinda working off of.
But I think it is a storm drains, I think that's on that.
Oh, it's, it, those are, and it's not just-
Right, it's part of that total load, yes.
Yes. And so, I was guessing, turned out to be a good guess, on the $2 million broadband for unserved areas, so I put a number in there just to show where we would be. I took a guess at the HVAC heat pump number, and I think I kind of heard holistically somewhere between, depending on how many go and how fast, say it's a million two to a million five, I took the higher end of that. The reason it says a million 350 is there's already 150,000 in here that I kind of slid into the side, just as a starter. I put 15 heat pumps in our initial blow, and so 15 times 10 is 150,000.
Yep.
If you add up the staffing level requests that were in this, in our cheat cheat, it was like $647,000, you add all of those up, and it's roughly 5.8 million dollar expenditures in excess of revenue in the general fund. This is the tough part of conversation for me, is we also know historically that there can opportunities, I've worked them that way, where our revenue comes in above how our budget process considers those. So we can come back to that item, but historically, this is why we've been comfortable, I understand, looking at a budget that has a drawdown, because what has happened over the course of a year is property values increase, revenues increase, and other tax line items, and we've, we've found comfort in that that's how it's worked. I don't like to, the struggle here is, somebody taught me a long time ago, hope's not a strategy, and you're kinda hoping, but I can't point to line items that make that true yet. We don't have the sophistication in the, in the estimation process that I wish we had about revenues, and maybe we could get there in the future. There are also grant revenues, if you remember, part of the, the approach is we strip grants out of the initial proposed budget, so we know there's some revenue opportunity there as grants are approved, we'll bring those into the budget. So when you add all of those things up, I call, call it 6.3 million dollars, if we look at everything that's on the table right now and said, you agree with my assumptions above. But the important part of this is what I wanted to try to come back to again, which is under that column header, cash position considerations. And so, I, I put these in order, this gets back to how are you gonna fund that? I wanna try to make it as simple, straightforward, round numbers as we can, but when I think about it, there's a sequence to what we would draw on. Some of this is opinion, some of this is talking with John, but there's a, there's a, an assumed ability to get our DTR fund. And so, that's a, a, something we could talk to historically, what we've used that for, you could go back and look from 2008, when we built this building, and think about what, what caused us to, to draw down on the fund at that time. If you look over to the right, I, these are Sean's words, so be careful what they are, but I believe we've looked at DTR as being there for infrastructure type items, and the periodic, or the, the knowledge that you have a contingency out there. It's not, it hasn't been typically viewed as, I'm going to fund Commissioner Rex wrote for operations from it. That said, I think we, we see a bunch of, bunch, that's not technical, we see a number of items that are unique investments in, in the county, whether it's in this building, whether it's in commitments like the broadband, but those are unique items that are not necessarily ongoing operational. So when, as we looked at the DTR fund, and if you just plant down a few rows below that, I tried to give some reference points. So in 2023, the cash plus investment position, so that means what we had in the bank, and what John had invested money in, so pure cash investments with the DTR fund at our low point in the year typically, even though the summer, was 4.9 million dollars. So I think as we talked before, when we were doing the math, there, there is a lot of in and out of that account. And when we could quantify what a lot means, but I think when you look at that, the concern is to go too thin with that, because its only funding source is, is what is actually built over time. And so, John's come back and, and look, say you take $2 million out of that 4.9, and you say, now is an appropriate time to think about using that. So I use that as funding source point. The second one is to start to draw down on the cash that's available in the general fund. This gets closer to me to operating needs, and it's simply operating needs in excess of annual revenues. And in my thinking at least, there, it'd be great if the world worked like McAllen's head, and everything happened, you know, in an annual cycle. But it doesn't. We have years where revenues are down, we have years where expenditures are necessary above that. I think that cash position buffers that operating need, and that would be my second thought of where we would go to fund. When you get hooked beyond that, it's, it starts to be a different discussion in my mind. The third item in there is discretionary expenditure review. So if you think about what we have in our budget, we have a contingency line that we've talked about, that we have traditionally funded at $440,000, that's already in the budget. We also have the op, option of, of funding MERS to start to try to chip, continue to chip away at the unfunded liability portion of our pension, 250,000 in there. The reason I show those, we add those two together and call it 690,000, in a, in a doomsday kind of scenario, those are options where we could choose to use the contingency fund, or not fund a pension if we were in a, in a dire position among a cash consideration. So that was my third in line. But once you've exhausted those, those are what is out there as uncommitted today. Let me just take one second to get this, so, this happened while I've been here, and I, we haven't talked a lot about it, but if you look at the, at the cash plus investment balance position of the general fund in July of this year, at our low point, it was at 1.5 million. But if you look at the cash position where we finished the month of July, it was at 12,000. So just as a, in my simpleton terms, rounding, we were basically out of cash-
Totally.
In the general fund at, in, in July. And John had to make some decisions, which was, that, that actually was only 12,000 because I believe we exited, liquidated, we moved into a cash position rather than an investment position.
Really?
And up there.
Wow.
So as we go into next year, I just wanted to set the context of, at a minimum, the way we operate, I believe needs to change, in terms of being thoughtful, like, we're going to have to monitor and manage differently as we start to look at a position where, if we did not, you know, my old economy story, assuming everything else was the same as this year, we're gonna be back there by next July, most likely, and have to manage that. So you don't manage an investment position in the month that you need cash, you have to decide that ahead of time.
I can add to that, I mean, for 23, I was doing an analysis on the year-to-date expenditures versus revenues. And as of July, before any adjustments, we had expended about 60% of the general fund budget, now we're like about 30% of revenue. So the board and finance were entering into contracts, paying bills, ahead of us actually collecting money. So it's just a better communication and a better understanding of your seat, as to when we confuse the due-
So I, I have a question, Sean, just with that example one, so if I'm understanding that math right, I mean, if we, of course, we haven't gotten to where the 2.1 of external financing comes from, which is either borrowing or bond or something, I assume, but-
When you get beyond, all that's trying to do is say, when you get beyond the three things I just described, now we're in the external financing market, which would be at this level of expenditures and this level of expected revenues, you'd start to say, we need to get ahead of that, wanting ourselves to be looking for external financing.
But if we had that 1.5 million cash drawdown on the general fund, and I look back, and the timing wasn't incorrect, this goes to, to your point, that July low point would be a negative 1.48, or 1.49, I mean, assuming all that 1.5 was spent prior to that, I mean-
Without external finance.
Right.
And then the taxes start to come in, again.
That's not true.
So, in some sense, it's, it's normal that we draw down, but it sounds like, because we're expecting more revenue starting July 15th, but it sounds like you're worried that we went down a little bit too low?
I, worried.
Scary low.
Yeah, I mean, you're basically drawing down all of your cash, and so what it's telling you is, from an operating standpoint, year over year, you're spending more than you're taking in.
Yeah.
And so that's the, we're there, is-
That's where I'm going. So it sounds to me like we need to start being more frugal, and we really need to start tightening about-
Or the timing of it needs to be more thought out.
Well, one, yeah, one last-
Excuse me, if I may, okay?
Yes.
Finish, because you're right, you're, if we continue to spend year over year more than we're bringing in, that we're not being-
Fiscally responsible.
Exactly.
Sure.
And example one also assumes that our contingency is not available for any other contingency, because it's been redeployed up top for the existing things, and that we put no money in the MERS under example one.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So if we were to embrace example one, there is zero contingency in our budget for anything that is, comes up, and we do not fulfill our responsibility to MERS to continue bringing out our zone.
So example one is if we spend every single dollar that's been requested?
For the most part, although I did give us some credit for things like that and substance abuse line, but for the most part, it's what's on our-
Right.
-wish list right now.
Right.
And to Commissioner Ross's point, there is a, so I don't want, without extensive analysis, I, I, this is subjective, I'm looking at a low point, there's probably the ability to manage cycles within a year. So again, this isn't sound the alarm, but I'd love to, I just wanna convey what I've seen in, you know, where we landed this year, to look at the most recent levels. It, and so, this is at even more risk of going down the drain, but-
We're with you, we're with you.
Let me go just one step further, and in this, in a separate spread, and even a lot littler numbers, and I apologize if I'm now starting to get messy, is a revenue trend. And so, this is my start for, I would love to get more, more thought, and it can't just be my thought that goes into this, but I'd love thinking around, why is it, and how do we start to understand why we're comfortable with revenues will always be more than they were last year? And so this, what, what I did was simply go out to our audited financials for the last four years, and unfortunately, that doesn't include 23, which would be the most relevant data point, because we're not through with 23. And what, it kind of points to the challenge, though, I'd love to be able to sit, stick in here and go, this is where I think we're gonna land in 2023. But as you know, you don't get, you don't get that information. And I, I'm struggling, how do you, I think I know it's figureable, that you could, you could do that, but that's gonna come with great effort and lifting to try to, to come up with projections like that. But if you, the point of this is, if you look at the last four or five years, it is not just an urban myth, it is true, that if you look at our, those first two lines would tell you, for example, if you looked at where we started with an original budget, so the adopted budget of the county, to where we finished each year, on average, if you go all the way to the right, we have 631,000 more in property tax revenue than what we budgeted. And if you expand that to total revenue, which includes licenses, permits, intergovernmental, so be careful with that, right? There's some one-time items when you start to get to some of those other lines.
Highly variable items.
Highly variable items, which make me very fleasy from a forecasting standpoint. Are they repeatable or sustainable? I don't know. But total revenue is, has been a million one more than that original budget. So again, why we felt comfortable with it, if you believe that, you know, the past is the indicator of the future, that's true, but if I go down, if I expand it just a little bit more and just go, in that second blue column, actual to actual, so forget the budgeting process and the noise that goes in, and like, there's assumptions and methodologies we're all learning together, going through that budgeting process. If I look at, at just the actual, from year to year, so now I'm measuring the variance of 2022 to 2021 actual, on average, property taxes are 390,000 more year over year, over year. If you go to total revenue, 590,000. So I, I only introduce you to that because this is almost the extent of my knowledge on this now, has been what I can pull together. And so, you're, I think, if you wanna now bounce back to the other page, and you go, well, how do you get comfortable with what your revenue opportunity is in there? I don't know, but I, I come back to here's history. And so what I did was, for example, in example number one, I looked at the lowest number on that page, and I said, is our worst year from 2020 to 2021? And I looked at our total revenue changes, about 150,000. So maybe that's a, that's the, the worst-case revenue growth year over year, and I put it into example number one. On the other side, you can go all the way to, I ought to be comfortable with a million two. So as I move to my example number two, all I did was say, aggressive revenue assumption, maybe you believe that the future looks like the past, and I put a million two in, in there, so that I could show the same impact, or comparable impacts on funding sources needed, if that makes sense. So-
I have just a question, I'm not gonna interrupt, but when I look at, and it's, I think it's important for us to look, so back to your previous one, where you have your averages there, up there, which some are 390, 591, and then it goes to the sheet you're just on, based on the numbers in that sheet, we're actually starting out expecting that to be 965, to some extent. I mean, we're, when we look at our budget, we're, we're assuming a budget drawdown of 965 at the beginning of our plan, that's crowning process, which, when I look at the averages on the right, I don't get all comfortable that that would actually happen. I mean, that, a 965 would be a, would put us in a, in a spot where our revenues matched our expenditures without a drawdown. We would need 965 average in that far right column on the revenue trends versus actual budget, to actually create a balanced budget, assume we, assuming we do the 250 MERS, and we-
Kind of, but expanded one step, which would be, and I get no, I get no grants next year at all.
So the grant money offsets that, so-
There's another component of it, that is, as we, as we approve grants, that it's covering some costs that's already-
In, in here, okay, thank you for that clarification. One other question I had there, when I looked at this, which was amazing, when it's an outlier, when I look at intergovernmental in 2022, there's a 500, a half a million dollar- a million dollar, thirty-six percent increase.
From the previous year.
Well, it's, well, it's actually way over any previous number budgeted, and what, what numbers go into that part? What is that?
I've started to dissect this, and John and I have only briefly talked, so please jump in here, but.
I mean, it's a huge, I mean, if I, if I take those numbers out, the far right averages change dramatically.
Agreed. And so I think, is Arco one of the items that goes through that, or is this all?
Twenty.
I was just gonna say twenty twenty, look at twenty twenty, that's Arco, right?
I believe.
Yes.
But I guess this goes to my, my sure answer's gonna be, I wish I knew.
I like that, I like that candor, thank you.
I don't have the, so imagine the embarrassment here.
Yeah.
Probably purple for a reason, because I'm embarrassed, is, those line items that you see under the revenue, those are not how we look at expenses in our budget book, as you noticed. I think there's, there's an implied grouping of revenues that, if you look at the revenue page, that comes together to make up the lines that we report externally. I haven't had the, the opportunity to go through and map those fully, but I believe that, this is my, one of my monitors here has been, like, it is really hard to forecast revenue, but the value of forecasting it and getting it wrong is to understand it. And as I, as I work through this, we don't, and this is not to throw anybody under the bus, but I'm limited in my understanding of that today, because we have an idyllic full cycle, and we, we really, for the most part, forecast revenues, kind of like what we're talking about right now, which is more, start with the prior year, understand the forty, twenty-nine, so that the items that are specifically taxable, but others are very, are very much rung. It's off, it's like, assume last year was a good starting point, which leads to the whole, it's a, it's a uncomfortable feeling in my gut to get very precise with it, because I, I'm struggling to ask that question.
I guess it's reasonable to expect some of that is one-time type things, I mean, some of it's Arco money in there, it's, it's not like a dependable stream of money that's been changed, because that, that is a big component.
I would love to give you a variance analysis of each one of those items, which is what, you know, my experience with these, so I should be able to tell you, around a million five a year were the pieces of it.
Okay.
I don't have that.
Oh, yeah, and it's not, I'm not saying, but I, when I look at those numbers, it's like, there's something going on there that is not regular operations, or else they wouldn't be swinging that big.
Agreed.
It's, we shouldn't look at that line item and get comfy, that's gonna, you know.
Well, and that's to the, the point of funding, you know, in, in dealing in, and you've said this, Commissioner Rettro, in, in, give me a range, give me some large pieces, and I think we, that's, that's our, in my opinion, that's our level of maturity, and if we think we're gonna get precise and not just accurate, we're not approaching precision.
Yeah, don't interrupt.
But you've lived it, or Jen's lived it, what, if I'm saying those wrong, please.
I'm not saying it's wrong, I mean, that definitely wouldn't be for me to say, but one of the things that John can remember that did change is we used to have a fund for revenue sharing in twenty twenty-two that, that was eliminated, and the state started paying us monthly or quarterly based on their state revenue, which starts October first. So what, I'm sorry, what, Sean, I'm typing Cohen when I'm doing that, so I'm sorry, I said it like that. But Sean, I think we'll look at, in the future, along with John, is, is that other, is the intergovernmental, the Arco funds that we're holding, and then what does that revenue sharing look like? Because that is, that was, I believe, twenty twenty-two, that's the last budget that I produced, and I believe we had our last drawdown, I want to say, maybe in twenty twenty-two?
It's our state revenue share.
Yep, and that has like thirty thousand in the, yeah, right now. But that for sure is a, is a, is a switch, they used to tell us that I'm off to pull, and one of the things that, since I wasn't part of twenty-three very much, and if that wasn't twenty-two, was that last pull, John and I had worked for years, we pulled that down every June, and it was six hundred thousand dollars every June. So this here in twenty-three, you did not have that drawdown, it was already gone.
Is that actually one of the items we looked at, what did the cash balance?
Yep.
Does the timing work around that sort of period?
And that was something that was prior treasurers, and then John and I worked together, that was just something you all, we always picked up, so that we knew the cash flow in July was there to get us to the cycle of tax revenue. All right, I didn't mean to.
But you didn't have it last, this year?
Quarterly now, or.
Okay.
Year-on-year basis, rather than a month. So you used to back that up as.
A lump sum.
A lump sum coming through July, and you use that as a bridge to get us through, but now we're stringing it earlier, or we're asking, we're spending it, so it's not there in July.
How much do you think we should have on hand in my awaiting tax revenues coming in?
We feel comfortable to get the months with the property.
Which is?
Depends on the month, but.
Pardon?
One or two million. We're getting down to the point where it's on the job.
On the other hand, you had the ability to, you got through it, I mean, at that point, you start using different financial.
Investments, we use investments. The proposal is going to use the investments as an expenditure. I won't add those next year, that's the point of the clarification.
Okay.
Example one, as soon as we spent that on things.
On broad things.
So, to wrap this one up, I'm not sure if there's anything else worth draining on this. I, I went over to the third column and said, get dramatic on some of the things that you either dirt the first stage, take out, just in all I would, full disclosure, what I was trying to get back to is where we weren't drawing down on cash. And so the magic in that one was, get back to where we committed a DTR drawdown, but beyond that, operationally, you'd be, you'd kind of keep all things, so it's nine hundred and three dollars off, but I was trying to come back to, to, just as a point of reference. But I think the, again, the point of this was, I just want to take the myth out of John's point, that line that is general fund cash plus investment balance is a million five, and we're assuming that he would convert his investments to cash seasonally, so that we would be able to go through the summer months where it's low, in the scenarios that are out there.
So you and John are working well together?
I don't know, some days.
Well, Sean, you, you asked us, you asked us all to begin eliminating some things from this list, and I don't think everybody got the.
No.
Got their recommendations.
I don't want to guarantee anybody, because this has been an incredible stretch, kind of stretch, I know you guys have been in for this, where it feels like all.
But that is our next task, to start pulling down the wish list.
And so to that point, I like, and I heard Commissioner Lotner say this, and this, I don't, help me, help myself here, I don't, I was using the homework just as a, as a way to guide, not to put anybody on the spot with a bow, thumbs up, this isn't formal in my mind, it was, help me with where there may not be a consensus, so that we should focus discussions on the items where it felt like there were maybe things that we hadn't talked enough about.
Sure.
Good work.
Yeah.
That's good.
No, I, I can tell you what those are, just from a little bit I get, that maybe it's not fair, and maybe that's the takeaway, that's the next step, but I love the approach where Commissioner Rettro is coming from, in terms of pulling off a couple of the things that are faulty, that feel like they're not operational, that feel like, and again, this is not, I mean, the decision is, is yours on the amount of spending from the county, but just to be fair, when we get beyond some of those clips that were laid out in that funding impact comparison, and I think the decision about where that comes from, probably starts to feel a little bit different than here in the past, because I think you're talking about borrowing money, I believe. Is that fair? Or?
Is there a taste for dividing this? I mean, I'm not, I've not been through one of these, but is there any taste for, like, just trying to encapsulate our operational issues, staffing, minor things that go outside of these major capital things, and trying to get to an agreement there? Because there's no way we're gonna fund any of that crap and stuff, excuse me, I think I've used the wrong word, projects. I was clearing my throat, is what that was. Please.
Commissioner Lotner.
The way I tended to look at these, and I did not turn in my slips, but, you know, if we look at, some of these things seem obvious to me, the jail needs a dishwasher, even if we just bought ten gallon of Dawn dish, we still need a dishwasher, so, and those are one time, we're gonna do those, they're done. Where, the things that tend to make me nervous, and I know, yeah, can we get by without a new maintenance vehicle for a year? We may be able to, okay, that's great, but we are going to have to consider that next year. The parking lot, I really don't want to put it off, could we? We probably could a year, some of those things, but we've got to remember, we've got to have those revenues next year to do those things. The things that don't go away become the staffing levels and salaries and those sort of things. So if we add an employee, that employee is there next year, and the year after, and the year after, and the year after. If we give, you know, if we, we move someone up.
Never goes away.
Up the scale outside of, of our negotiated step system, et cetera, those, those, those costs are there year after year after year. And I always try to remember, one of my first negotiations, I sat in on, they said that, I believe at that time, if we, we looked at three percent raise, and then it's compounded, so the next year you got that three percent raise, and three percent on top of that raise. The next year, that's there, and you got three percent on top of that, three percent, and that three percent that had been on top of that. So after eleven years, a salary would double, and we were, so that's just something that's always kept, been in the back of my mind, that those, those things are compounded, so that's just something to keep in mind. So for me, it's easier to look at, yeah, if, if nine one one really needs new consoles, we ought to be giving nine one one new consoles, because to me, that's a, that's a, you know, that can be, I don't know what the situation is of life and death, are, are the consoles failing? You know, are the monitors failing, whatever? Does he have income that can cover that? I don't know, so we have to look at the revenue side of it also. That's the way I look at these. So a lot of these are no's for me, not a lot, but several are just because, you know, I, you know, I, I put a question mark by the financial software, do, do I think we need it? I think it's possible?
The need for now.
Yeah, right, so can we get by without it? We do have something that's working, so let's keep going. So that, that, that was where I looked, that's where I come from on these.
We could use that, because that's when we started to just dabble or talk about that in the finance committee meeting, that, you know, we're just trying to lay the groundwork, but just using that as an example, Commissioner Lotner, the, you know, that'd be a good example off of myself, I'm aligned with that one. Notice in my general examples, I took that off the page. But what I think is important to consider there, is that's one of those awkward ones that encumbers you for more than a year, which gets you into, I understand the territory, and, but if you never get on the list, it's a multi-year deliverable, you're never making progress. And so I just got an example this week, real time, you shot up, hey, here's what you would do, here's what our proposal could look like, but there's an upfront cost to that, and that down payment to get on the list is not insignificant, it may be a hundred thousand dollars by itself for twenty twenty-five, which is scary. So there's things like that that we could consider trying to stage, it doesn't have to be all or none, and I think we just heard Gary kind of leave for the same, so to your point, Commissioner Rettro, I think some could be pulled apart.
Yeah, and I, you know, I kind of looked at my list a little bit the same, it's like, I hate to say yes or no, on something, something, there's amounts that you might be willing to do some of, and, you know, I like that financial software, I mean, that's, I agree with your position, if we don't start, we never start, and, you know, all right, what is a reasonable part to put in the budget for next year? We don't have to put, we don't have to say yes or no to two fifty, we can say yes and say, all right, we're putting a hundred in for that next year, and, and that is an alternate position on many of these items in my mind.
So is a, is a, I don't know if you have, perhaps Commissioner Westall, I'm in the awkward spot of, whatever I write down, I'll feel like I'm the, and if that's, if that's what you want me to do, I'm happy to, you know, be, you know, it's like move out, draw fire, happy to draw fire, and write down what I think some of those could be, but is it on the bulky items that are, that tend to be, you go to capitalization, risk being at the, on the demarcation kind of thing, but it's, it's broadband, how much and when?
HVAC.
HVAC, how much and when? It's financial system, how much and when? I don't know if other ones cross that threshold, but taking some of those and dealing with those either through, kind of the extraordinary funding source, like, let's really get serious, I don't know, we might go borrow and do them all in twenty twenty-four, or is a stage consideration with them, with Lyle, I'd be happy to try to work through those.
It seems to me on the operational ones, we need to know where each of us stand, and then we, we do the, the capital improvement or the big projects separate from that, but on this wish list, I suspect there's quite a bit of common agreement on some that don't make the cut. And, and I think it'd be healthy to have everybody really do, if not this sheet, the next version of this sheet, basically two categories, operational being one, and just get everybody to weigh in. And if we don't have at least four commissioners in support of something, it's probably off the list.
The only slight problem I have with that is, is, is if I would support item A, my support for A may depend on items Z, P, and Q not happening. And so once I've done yes for A, and then we go through and say, that's a done deal, then I change my minds, I didn't, I only did that expecting I wouldn't spend on these other three things, it puts you in a, I, I don't know how to get there, but it, I think there's kind of like more.
Couple more meetings.
More, there's a little more, for lack of a better term, a grand bargaining type, I'm okay with these three, assuming these eight don't happen, so I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I have a question. I'm all in favor, as I've told you, of you getting the tools you need to do your job. Are there enough tools in the current software that could be developed that are not or used? I don't know, I'm clueless, this is not my field.
So here, let me tell you.
Are there, is there enough that could be developed that would get you down the road?
Let me answer first by, here's what I've done, and it is not, I'm not to a point where I can say, if it is a blue yes or no. I sat in on demos from our current software provider and asked questions about capabilities. There are capabilities that are available that we don't use today, that could be worth exploring. My instinct or my guts telling me right now, that would move the ball a few yards, when we're really trying to go more on that. And so I'm, I'm concerned that, in this, so put it in the context of what we just talked about with HVAC system, you could, you could choose to try to, let's say, hold on, but you're. you're, if you start to put good money after maybe not the target stage, you come potentially throw away money in the long run.
Oh, so it would cost money to add those parts of the system?
It would cost money, it would take time, it would cause us to recreate processes here that occur today, like with payroll or a council table, that may not be the optimal target state. And so, is it worth taking that interim state, that step towards an interim state, spending some money on things that we have inherent today that would take, you're going to pull things on to it? Or does it make more sense to try to, let's hold as much as we can and take a bigger step at once? And I don't know how else to say it, is I believe that there is, there are capabilities that we would be advantaged to take that bigger step than to kind of do the little baby incremental steps where we keep writing the check and we keep interfering with processes and then find that we don't, we look up a year and a half from now and we're not where we wanted to be.
Can I hop in there for a second? This is your eric protease, but when I look, we don't have a software. We have two major softwares, PSNA and Harris. And my understanding is our general ledger and payroll runs through Harris and much of our other things. So if we even were to bolt on, there's someone taking a paper thing out of one thing and entering it into another thing. And I think that's part of the process that we're trying to, vision wise, and you know, you can hop in, but I, you know, that's, you know, that's where I think a lot of the inefficiencies and opportunities for mistakes, not that they've been made, but it also gets a more labor intensive than automatic. I mean, in my business, we went for, we tried to go to a single entry. So if I put a piece of information in one way, it appears in every other place within the system that it's needed. It doesn't have to be manually transferred from A to B, it gets there. And so that also provides transparency to everyone else to see that in almost real time as it's entered for, so anyway, that's, I'm elaborating on your need, but hopefully I'm doing it in a way that helps you, and if not, shut me up.
Is that, is that the case for all of the people who use this?
So who uses it is an interesting question, where Commissioner Retsrow was just going. Today, there's what, maybe, I don't know, Jen, there's less than half a dozen people that use the general ledger, that it's really just, it's a couple of people. But what I keep saying is, this isn't a general ledger system. This is the ability for a department to be independent on entry from a, if you're talking about a payroll process that starts with scheduling an individual, then ultimately that individual does work from there to a timesheet, from a timesheet to a submission to get paid, that is, that's an end to end process. And so we're talking about today, everything up to the point where they submit, in that example, a piece of paper that says, this is what hours I ordered, is, it's divided, but it's mostly landing in the accounting office with that piece of paper. That audience starts to change if we say we want departments to start to be responsible for their employees, for their payroll submission, for approval of that. And so that's where I think, it's not, I keep trying to move to think end to end process and less about the act of, you know, cutting a paycheck. To Commissioner Retsrow's point, and this is not that, we should get Liana in here, I'm not that, I talk about things that are well beyond my skill set, but if you just think about something that is as basic as, do you want multiple databases, or do you want a database where all the information sits? And when you start to move to an integrated system, you're talking about all that data being in one place. And as that data's in one place, now we have capability of doing things like something for, like, this is just off the wall, un-reversed, but I don't want a department to spend more than their budget in line item. Today, they, how would they, how would they know? They'd have to come to the accounting department, we'd have to print them a current report, we'd have to take a look at what invoices might be in flight, or if all that's in one place, you can actually put control in place that doesn't let them suspend an invoice where they're beyond their budget, because that data is now all resident in one place. That's a far off state. That means that we have to have department heads and folks in a distributed way be capable of and understand the implications of what I just said, but it's now it's possible. And they could even go out and get a little Latin, hopefully, and print a report that says, here's where I am on October 11th.
Sean, this just reminds me too of when we're making changes to anything, we just need to do it slowly. And so you're in your fifth month here, right? And things have been moving fast. But I just.
I only live five years older.
We were, we were.
A little bit of hair when you're here.
We were encouraged by the sergeant in the back, I'm sorry, for you sergeant, anyways, you know, and Trudy Gala, to get input from all the employees. And I just feel like this is just a situation where we're talking again, we just need to go slow and in our budget, think about growing slowly and making this change after we've really thoroughly asked the whole team. And so, yeah, all these are such huge, huge expenditures that I just feel like, yeah, let's budget a little bit to get you started, but let's not jump in until we have the process fully vetted by the whole, the whole employee structure, so.
I do appreciate that, so this is not a, I'm not debating that point.
Okay.
The challenge is, I said this until, I'm sorry, if others have heard me say this over and over, I would love to start, my experience is you start with a whiteboard and you go, wouldn't want a process to be, what is it today and how do you want it to work? The challenge here is when you ask that question, that it is, we don't have experiences distributed enough to get an articulate, common, like if I went and I asked this year, no offense, but Mr. Kiesel may have a whole different thought on how he would want payroll to work than if I walked down to the courts.
Sure.
And so I actually think that in some ways, what we need to think about is all put our hands in the middle, understanding what our experiences, what's brought to the table. We haven't had a chance to do that. But I think we actually need the help of a system that is well vetted in the, why I work here, okay, how we get from that. It is going to help us define what is possible, where today in people's minds, if I asked him what's broken with the payroll process, he's going to point to something that aggravates him. What? So, thank you for that. But I don't know if that makes sense, but part of this is, does process come first or does capability come first?
Yeah.
And I don't think there's a.
But I think, I mean, if we said go and all this was done, that's, that's three, several years of implementation before you're where you want to get to, right? I mean, it's inherently slow because it just can only happen so fast.
And, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I agree on personnel changes. I think on something like this, it's training, because I'm pretty clueless on this. This is scary for most of us. It's like this wasteland of, so there's always going to be resistance to an accounting change, huge resistance. I totally get, so I think with personnel changes, we talked about this in the personnel meeting, we really need to vet that with people. I think with something like this, we need to educate like crazy.
To Commissioner Ross's point.
So I think there's a difference between, but change is change. I mean, change is.
And I think, I think this conversation's a good one to have, but I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, we have to finalize the budget.
Right.
And I think what we probably need is another session when we all come in prepared to have that dialogue about what we don't want on the list and what we do. And, and I don't know how we proceed without doing that.
So my concern is, we were going to be able to finish today. I delayed leaving a day.
We're a long wait for finish.
So we could finish. And I'm really concerned about taking the final votes if I'm not going to be here.
We can run without you. Just kidding.
That's what I'm afraid of.
We may not be done before you get back.
That's reasonable, I mean.
So I can participate in Zoom sessions, but for final votes, I appreciate it if we did that.
What's that? What's our, I'm trying to.
It's before the next meeting.
No, but what's our, like, could you, you spent some time talking about this, what our actual, last year we didn't get done till, when I say we, it's a different we, but.
Yes, last year it was, it's going to be the last week in November, it is posted to the public, and then you have your first meeting in December. You, as an executive board, recommend your budget to the public hearing for that regular session, which is the second week in December. That is what happened last year.
So does that leave time for you to get back?
So I'm assuming our work has to be ready to, for the November executive committee meeting, for us to make final.
No, your work, if you're going to do it for November, he has to have this wrapped up the last week in October and publicly published for a week before you recommend it.
We have through December to do it if we want to, right?
You can go all the way whenever you want. It just makes, I will tell you from personal experience, which maybe nobody wants to hear, that will make his life a wonderful time to be here.
Yeah, that's actually good to hear, because, I mean, our inability to act doesn't need to make emergency on your.
Yes.
Right, it was, I can tell you, it was miserable having you approve that in December, but I understand where you're at, and maybe there can be a game plan.
Can I ask a question? I think last year, because of all the transition that happened in that year, it was even more cumbersome and more challenging. Is that a fair statement, Jen?
Yeah, so what happens is, is he, what Sean, what the CFO will do is, once you approve that budget, so let's, for instance, December 13th, I think is what it was last year, once you adopt that budget and you have your formal board motion, then he takes those hard facts that you have all approved without any changes that he's presented to you, and he rolls that into January 1, so that there is operations ready on January 1. So he takes what he calls, I think, thousands of pages, and he makes that literal changes, okay, hundreds, sorry, hundreds of pages, and he makes those your hard facts to roll January 1.
But that's doable, right? It's not, it's not, I don't know that it was, last year was incredibly cumbersome, and I know there were countless hours that were put in to fix things and correct things. Hopefully with this continuity that we've had in 2023.
He can just roll in.
It will be an easier process, but still, there's still going to be a lot of checks and balances, so.
The editor sheriff wants to speak.
Operationally due, pushing until December has not held well for some departments, specifically vehicles. There is a window opening for vehicles in November. You missed that window, you may not see your vehicles for a few months. Staffing wise.
I could be available for a meeting.
If there's a position to be filled, that's ours, any department, slightly described January 1, once you approve it in December, depending on the process, hiring, training, whatever, it's not kicking in right away. The financial aspect is good, but operational standpoint is not.
So I have just a prior history to that. If you know and you want it, then between Sean and the department heads, so for instance, the undersheriff Kiesel will come to Cohen, and in November, you will have your vehicle purchase. It solidifies that you have agreed to those vehicles. At that point, you are making an amendment and a ready amendment for '24 if it hasn't been approved as of yet. If he's concerned about his vehicles, he could come in August. He can come in September, October, he can come and the board makes that motion that solidifies Cohen's budget. So if there are opportunities that you want that are time sensitive like that, like vehicles, I would put him on your November agenda, and you can decide at that November agenda, if you're not going to make your schedule, which we have a couple weeks out for agenda, I think in November anyway, that this is a hard fact, you're either saying yes to three, yes to four, yes to five, six, whatever the number is, and that is setting in stone, and he has the board motion to go ahead.
Well, assuming we want to be done in time for the first timeline, when do we need to have final budget approved by this group in order to meet the timeline for the public meeting and approval at the board meeting?
In November, you mean?
Yeah.
I think we backed up like three weeks in the year, so if it's, for the November date, it's maybe.
Yeah, so your, so your November date for your executive is the 14th, and your regular session is the 21st. I think Laurel needs, did she tell us, a week to, that it's got to be published and available a week before the executive? So he's got, it looks like October, like Halloween. We could double check, but you know, that's, I think that's what we were talking about before, yeah.
November 3.
So that's what it would have to be published.
It's got to be, yeah, so he has to, basically, what happens is, is we solidify, and he rolls all your numbers into what we call level three in ours, and it's called the adopted. So you have your proposed, your VOC changes, and then you're going to adoption, propose to adopt. And that's when the public can say, I don't like that number, explain that number, that kind of thing.
So what if we did the first two weeks in December, moved up the executive?
It already is. Your executive already is the first and second week in December, that's what we did last year. It's not an argument, say you can.
So you could make interim decisions like a car.
Pardon?
You could make interim decisions like a car, but the final decisions.
It sounds, it sounds though, like we could meet the November 1.
If she's on Zoom.
I can't vote on Zoom.
You can participate.
I can't Zoom, I can't vote.
These are, the final budget is approved in the board meeting in November. This is, this is tentative, this is recommendation, so you can participate, but the final vote, you'll be back for a board meeting.
Only if you guys commit that broadband will be in the budget, but I agree to that. The 850 we have could be the down payment on continuing broadband, because if we don't accept this, the price goes up, and it'll be on your head.
Well, it would be my recommendation that we try to finalize it in the week of Halloween week, that Gwen participates by Zoom, we get a tentative budget ready for the, for the public, we take public input at the November board meeting and then make the final vote. I mean, I think that schedule works.
We said by the 31st, he needs it though, right?
Yeah.
So Halloween week, that's Tuesday.
You know what, people's livelihoods are on the line, so I can't agree to that. People are making, are working on broadband, on their frickin' hot.
All of it counting.
No, everybody else is going to get covered.
Well, I just want to clarify.
Half of these people are yours, ma'am.
Operating, operational, capital.
Yeah, I think that's the next step, right?
Because broadband is capital, right?
We're talking never for these people, years.
So, so to Gwen's thing, and this is, I'm out of, I don't.
I left my hearing aids at home, and I'm losing track of the four conversations going on. Commissioner Retsrow.
So Jen just asked, are we separating, and I guess, I don't know, I've not done this before, I'm not, I'm against amendments, but to try to satisfy Commissioner Algaia's concerns and ours, could we get a budget done that included what we all agree is operational things and adopt it? And I know it'd be a major amendment with these capital improvement things, but if we haven't got there, could we just let that be a next step? I mean, we'd have to be candid, I don't know if that's possible, I don't know what the taste for that is, but it sounds like we're having a difficult time getting, unless we go through, I mean, I'm okay with yours, but it sounds like we have someone adamantly opposed to the, to the.
I could, I could meet on November 9. We would have the 9th, 10th, and the 13th before that meeting for final decisions.
And that's a December approval. Or, I had to check with Sean, I'm guessing he could do a special session, which is typically your public doesn't like, you know, I mean, they have the, this is what's kind of been anticipated. But I mean.
But we've got people's livelihoods on the line here.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, you're, in the past, you are correct, operational was approved in October. Operational was approved in October. As you can see, we have never budgeted an HVAC. We've never budgeted broadband. We've never budgeted roofs, ever, in our budget that's prepared to you. This is, you can consider this an operational budget. I mean, literally, John, can you ever remember that we did a major project during, during this process? No.
So, so it sounds like we could do that and meet our November deadline for, for a public meeting and, and approve the budget and make the decisions for the...
The long-term operation.
Projects as, as December board meeting.
Except that you're gonna have a broadband agreement that you have to agree to or lose it, and then it, the price just goes up.
But you can't have it both ways. You, you want an immediate decision, but you... No, let me finish. You want an immediate decision, but you wanna put off that decision until December. We can't do it both ways. You can participate in the meeting by Zoom, and, and we have the, and there's no official votes until our board meeting anyway. So, I don't know what...
So, maybe this is another issue I'm discussing. Because it sounds like, and it sounds like this is extraneous to the budget, actually, what I'm talking about. They have worked for two months to get that price down to a spectrum, and I don't think that's gonna be something you can hang on to for...
That's, that's my question, I have to interrupt you.
So, this is outside the operational, yeah.
They're just gonna give it to us next week, maybe. I assume that they know there's a cycle within us. I mean, they're, they're, I don't think they're expecting, they said it on our desk, and we signed it the day it gets here.
No, but they're...
And they're, they're still, they said they'd be till first of the year completing some of this stuff.
So, we'll need to find that out.
So, we need to find out. So, I, I just don't know that the urgency is there as, as much as you say to, to actually sign a name.
I hope it's not.
Yeah. I mean, then, I don't know. I mean, that'd be a question. I mean, you send a quote, it's good for 30 days, it's good for something. It isn't just, uh, good for one minute. So, I assume we'd have some time to respond to a $2 million...
Or one, two.
Or whatever, it'd be in the way.
I think a million, two is what...
So, it sounds to me like we can work on our operational budget, meet the deadline of Halloween, or whatever that date is in October, and be done with our operational budget. Hold off on the decisions on our HVAC and our broadband and our infrastructure needs, and do that as a, as a separate discussion in December.
Makes sense to me. And I think we can talk about, I mean, to Commissioner Lautner saying, okay, you know, is paving the parking lot, I mean, is that really a kick it down road or part that's, we could, we can work that out in the next meeting or two, which are those few smaller things we kick out.
So, could we have a meeting next week, Sean, to hear from everybody on what our priorities for not including on the operational budget are?
Yes.
Right? And you can participate, Gwen, by, by, by Zoom on that. And again, we won't take final votes, so you can participate there like you participate here.
I'll take my computer to the top of my school.
We'll just have a switch, so if you talk too much, we'll turn off.
So, do we have a date?
For sure.
Can we set a date now? So, this has to be completed by when, Sean, to...
I can't remember the dates.
Today.
When is the completion date hit to November? When do we have to, we have to meet?
First. Yeah, you wanna meet, you wanna make sure that you're fine, he's got you, your final numbers, the last week in October.
We should probably meet next week then, so that the following week, we can compile that information, because the 30th will be too late.
30th is Monday, right?
For some reason, I have Wednesday on my, was that a...
25th is, I think, a building and grounds.
I had a finance Wednesday, the 18th on mine.
The 18th, we have a finance committee.
I have a finance committee on the 25th at 1 o'clock.
So, we have buildings and grounds here before.
Uh, this may take...
Okay, I, yeah, I don't have that one, but I do have the 18th.
Yeah, we have the 18th, I don't have the 25th.
It was one of the, one of the meetings that was sent out to reserve...
25th is buildings and grounds.
Yeah.
I think 25th was...
Building in sight. I got building in sight, 9/11 on the 25th, and I don't have a solid meeting on Wednesday, 18th, but it was one of the, reserved the dates that was sent out.
Yeah, it was 9:00, that's the one that you lost. Remember, you said you put it in there, and you were gonna find it at Thanksgiving as well?
Yep.
So, yes, the 18th, we're at 9:00, the negotiation is at 8:00. So, 9:00 finance on the 18th.
Yeah, then that's the one. I don't have to go 8:00 whatnot.
No.
That's good. So, does everyone else have anything?
Well, it's only the finance committee, so it's only Commissioner Algar, you, you and Commissioner Marcelo.
Correct.
Do you, uh...
But, but we could follow that with a...
Budget.
We could replace, I mean, that, that wasn't a, if we wanna use that, I mean, we could use it for this, if we, that's the...
Or I could, we could, we could use the morning, and we're sure, I mean, I don't mind sticking around on, I mean, gets to a certain point in the day, it's not worth me doing other things, so if we wanna follow with the finance committee, I'm okay with that. I don't know what's availability for it.
What are you looking at, Doug?
Wednesday, the 18th.
Wednesday, the 18th.
Gwen, are you, are you available by Zoom on the, on Monday, the 18th?
I can make sure I am.
Pardon?
I can make sure I am. I just won't go to the top of Mama's Scooby.
Well, you said mornings, mornings were better.
Monday.
Not the 8th.
Monday, the, Wednesday, the 18th.
Wednesday, the 18th. Speak loudly.
We're in October.
What time?
9, 9:00 on Wednesday, the 18th. We know, we know the room's available, because we already had it.
You're already here.
Yep.
We kicked out, uh...
Kicked out Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
Yes, I remember that.
Would we have a tentative timeframe for that? I have a noon that I'd like to, I could... So, 9 to 9 to 11:30?
9 to noon work?
I'm out of here at 11:30 then. Give me an O?
Give you a half.
And then do, yeah, is that work?
Does that work for you?
Melinda? 9 to noon?
Yep.
Is budget on the 18th? And then...
This is like a biggie, right? I mean, this is like one where we're gonna really... So, the only thing we don't know is Commissioner Kramer. So, I will, I mean, we'll go get that information to her right away, so that she's aware that that meeting has been scheduled for the budget.
Are we, do you wanna reschedule the finance committee for after that? I mean, the day is gone, so I'm just changing the names to protect the innocent here.
Do you wanna meet at noon that we're following finance, or 1 o'clock? That same day since we're here?
I think no one can say immediately following the budget, the budget work session, or you could take a lunch break and do it at 1 or something.
We're gonna be here...
I do have a 4 o'clock, uh, foundation board meeting.
That day?
That day. But I'm free till 4.
But we weren't, we only had a couple of hours scheduled for finance anyway, so...
Melinda asked if, uh, she, Commissioner Allen could, uh, reach out to reschedule the finance committee.
Yep, got it. Or else, just to make it, immediately follow the budget.
I think I'm open to it.
If there are items to work, yeah.
I'm gonna stick it in, so I don't, it's easier to take something out than it is to...
Sean, do you need anything from us before then? Would you, would you like us to...
It's your preference, but I've collected a few things. If it would help to see where others are starting from, I'm happy to take it to the, kind of, indication of interest. The only other thing I could, so if, if it desires that, if you'll send me what the thoughts are, I will compile and send them back out. I guess the other piece is, I can see where there is, and where there is some, uh, aversions of thought on a few of these. Are there, is there any clarity or any additional information needed on any of the items? If not, then I think we're good. If, if there's anything still confusing or, you know, that, that would be the only other thing I could think of, Commissioner.
If, if I could, if I could suggest how we do it, and if this is the wrong format, we don't have to, but I think it'd be useful to, to hear from each of us. And we'll all be, well, we'll all listen, just go round rabbit and hear what everybody's thinking on what may be their top priority and what may be their lowest priority, so we get a sense of where everybody is.
For now, I'll just shorten the list by those few items that are, capital endings are pulled to the side.
I do have one last question to help me with this, just on the, on your Lilo County, the, and I think we talked about this, but I can't remember, the childcare fund amounts.
Yep.
We had some debate, and I don't have exact notes on that. I know there might be different expectations, but as it stands right now, the 213 and the 32, approximately, are they, are they in this right now? Are they in our budget as, as, as...
They are not in, so that 213 and the 32 are not reflected in here.
Okay.
And so, there are opportunities that I pulled off to the side.
I, I know that we may have a difference of opinion with Cameron on that, as far as what that goes and what his expectations are there, but for our benefit, that money right now isn't spent yet. Is that, we all, I'm just trying to make sure. Okay.
Commissioner Lautner, and then Commissioner Alguer.
Right off the bat, I would take that number 15 out, which is the, the incremental mid-year merit raise. From the very beginning, I never, I never liked the, that term, because we don't, we just simply don't do merit raises here in the county. And we've already negotiated a pay raise that's anywhere from $150 to $200,000. So, I've got my neighbor here screaming for us to find 1.2 million for broadband, and there's 200,000 right there, that even if we had to push broadband back a year, that 200,000 isn't going to go away the next year. Plus, you're going to put 3% on top of that, considering what we've already negotiated. So, I would say, take that rate out, rate from the beginning.
Where is that?
I can see it, second page.
Right at the top. Oh, okay. Thank you. We'll go and find it.
Yeah, this is what I was talking about. If we just, we have to be really, really conservative where we can, look at what we're mandated to do and, and... And then prioritize.
And, and we are going to need staff for your office.
It's, it's in there.
Your general agreement, I support.
I'm not sure the facilities director is something, I know you dearly want that, but I'm not sure that's something we can afford quite yet.
But I think, I think we're, that's, now that we're jumping ahead, because that's our next meeting.
I'm putting my two bits in while I can.
Where we're gonna talk about what our priorities are.
We're gonna hear from you at the Mount Musulius, or wherever that is.
And is everybody comfortable with, with our decision to say Gwen may participate actively and by Zoom for this meeting?
It's a working meeting, so, yeah.
A meeting that allows it, as long as we don't take votes, or as long as she doesn't vote. So, when we have her on Zoom, if we decide we wanna vote, she can't vote.
But there will be hell to pay.
We don't need to set another meeting pass that to get this done, or tentative date? We think we could all get it done in the next time, or you wanna stick one on the schedule?
Wanna get one more date at the end of that week?
While we're all sitting here.
You're not gonna do it in 3 hours.
I, I, I think we might be a little ways away from finishing it in 3 hours.
So, that, what is, after the 18th, is the Halloween?
The 23rd, I think, the 23rd through the 27th.
Right. So, I'm just clarifying and restating for Sean. So, on the 18th, you're looking to the yes and no, which will give him the answers he needs to move forward. So, the next meeting that you would be scheduling, if that makes sense, is he'd give you your final numbers of what your drawdown would be, your revenues and expense totals, and changes to those reflective budgets for them, and go public. Does that make sense?
Pretty final, yeah. I mean, yeah.
But that assumes we get it all done on the 18th, right?
If we can get her done, yes.
If you get it done from the 18th, I still think that you would wanna meet and go over what he's got, he, he needs to present to you.
Yep, what it looks like.
Yep. And then that commit budget work session is, that's the go-ahead to publish. Does that make sense?
Or still make changes?
Yep. Or still make changes.
So, maybe earlier that week might be better, like Monday, Tuesday?
Would October 40 work?
I don't know.
20th doesn't work for me.
I think on this, Tuesday, can you?
I think they were thinking the next 23rd. Like, maybe the Monday or Tuesday, 23rd?
Tuesday or Wednesday, for me.
Tuesday or Wednesday.
Tuesday or Wednesday.
Here Wednesday, anyway.
Yeah, we're here Wednesday already. You've got two of us.
Could do Wednesday afternoon.
Let's, let's do Wednesday.
The 25th.
It'd be the 25th in the afternoon.
What time? 1 o'clock?
We can't do Tuesday, why is that?
Oh, we could. Wednesday, bad for me.
Wednesday's bad for me, yeah. On what day, Tuesday?
It would be short, I guess, because you'd be finished.
I'm just not sure, I'm just not sure we're gonna be. So, what, when's your, when's your commitment on the Wednesday? Is it later, or when is...
Well, it's all day, but I would do morning. Can we do, like, 10:30 or 8 o'clock?
If we switch our buildings and grounds around, like, if we did finance, we could.
It doesn't, we, I'm flexible, I mean, it doesn't matter. You're shooting a day, so if you wanna do it in the morning...
I think we were just gonna be looking at some HVAC numbers to bring to budget, but that's no longer a...
Yeah. I think, I don't, I don't know that we even need to...
We could cancel it, well, we're gonna bring people in to have this, we've actually contacted people to be here.
We'll have to switch them, yeah.
I don't care, we can kick it down if you, if you think so.
9 o'clock, or what time?
25th at 9 o'clock? Or I, I can meet earlier than that if you, if you want.